Executive Order N twenty-nine twenty issued by Governor Newsom on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting of the Dream Madison Public Safety Task Force will be conducted exclusively through teleconference and Zoom video conference. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID nineteen virus, there will be no physical meeting location available. To access the meeting remotely, use the Internet, join PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or any Android device, and use the URL. If you do not wish for your name to appear on the screen, then use the drop-down menu and click on Rename. Rename yourself to be anonymous. To request a speak, use the raise hand icon on the bottom of your screen. And if you want to join by phone, you can dial the number here, six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-nine-one-two-eight. Ms. Cole, we're ready to proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Fine?
Present.
Vice Chair Chima?
Present.
Commissioner Dangerfield?
Present.
Commissioner Hyde?
Present.
Commissioner Hager?
Present.
Commissioner Lindheim? Commissioner Lindheim? You're on mute.
Are you calling me?
Yes, Commissioner Lindheim. Thank you. Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Gosch? Here. Commissioner Optin?
Here.
Commissioner Blake? Commissioner Blake? Commissioner Yijigoo?
Present.
Commissioner Polk? You're on mute. No.
Present.
Commissioner Malvito?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Hello.
Hi. Commissioner Ho?
Present.
Commissioner Letzger?
Present.
Chair Mizel?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Before we proceed to the agenda's public comment, I'll use just prerogative to ask the task force to consider suspending the rules during our action discussions to allow the public to be able to give comment while we're having these discussions. I would suggest that we do suspend in this way that we allow a maximum of two minutes for each action item and allow these comments to come in more naturally throughout the discussion. For reference, I have done this, used this method in subcommittee meetings to allow for greater public participation. And I would like to do it today because I want to ensure the public can, you know, really have a bigger role in these discussions since we only have a public comment currently scheduled for at right now to begin the meeting. And that would require a two-thirds vote of the task force. So to clarify the rules, I would suggest, so for each of our action items, we'd allow up to two minutes per speaker from the public to give comment on these items. I will watch the raise hands function and ensure that those hands are received and those comments were received in a timely manner. And then we can proceed and continue our discussion on those items. So yeah, that will require a motion, a second, and then a two-thirds vote if the task force is so keen.
So move.
I'll second it.
Here we have the motion from Commissioner Optin, a second from Vice Chair Chima, Ms. Cole. There is no further discussion. If you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fine?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chima?
Yes.
Commissioner Dangerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
I'd like to vote yes, but I also wanted to ask a question. Do we have a sense of what this would do to our overall timeframe of six to eight P M? Would this lengthen the meeting? You know, does anybody have a guess about that?
My inclination is that six to eight will be a tough timeline to me, to be quite honest, whether we do this actually or not. I think if we limit it to two minutes, that should, you know, allow us to continue, you know, assuming, you know, if we average, you know, four to five speakers a item. You know, if they go the full ten minutes, that could add, you know, half an hour possibly to the meeting. But I do think participation is probably, well, it's always worth it, but in terms of having it at those points in the meeting where it's most pertinent to the items.
Also, it doesn't make any difference in the time because if we took it at the beginning, people would still have the same amount of time in the public to comment or make comments. So I think it'll even out. Let's hope so.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Note it. Commissioner Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Lindheim? Commissioner Lindheim?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Absent. Commissioner Gosch?
Yes.
Mr. Yijigoo?
No.
Commissioner Optin?
Yes.
Mr. Blake? Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Malvito?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Ho?
Just a quick comment to let other members know that I generally will be dropping off at eight, but I watched the recording afterwards. But my vote is yes. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you. Commissioner Letzger?
Yes.
Chair Mizel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion stands.
You. So now proceed the public comment and just remind the public you will have the opportunity to comment up to two minutes on our discussion items as we reach them on the agenda. But we will also take public comment now.
Let me let them in. We'll allow John Kaner in first.
Yeah.
John, you should be able to speak.
Great. Thank you. Hi, I'm John Kaner, the CEO of the Downtown Berkeley Association. Been in this position for twelve years, thirty-one-year resident of Berkeley. And before I was at the DBA, I ran rebuilding together Oakland where I worked with primarily communities of color in East and West Oakland. What I'm here to do when I'm here with some other merchants is to request as part of your community outreach process that you have a listening session with our merchants, small businesses, nonprofits, and arts organizations. They've really, really been struggling and we have a situation where a lot of them don't feel safe in our downtown. We're having a hard time getting people back post-pandemic. And we really, we understand that this may not be the primary focus, but we really think that we're part of the community and their voices need to be heard. So we asked, do you do that? We had a board meeting, for example, last week, and I was surprised we had a pub saying they were hesitant to reopen because their staff didn't feel safe. And I also heard from one of our local theaters that they're having a hard time attracting some women and particularly actors of community of color from acting in some of their shows because they don't feel safe also leaving the theaters. So we really appreciate the bite detail. It's been a great addition. But we really love to make sure that you all have an opportunity to hear directly from our merchants and some of them may be on tonight. Thank you very much.
I'll go to the next speaker. Give me one second. Okay, we'll allow Carol Morosovick in. Carol, you should be able to speak.
Hi. So at the last meeting, I heard a lot of discussion about the fifty percent and goal. And my reaction to that was fifty percent of a goal is not a commitment. And ironically, after that, I heard at a city council meeting where the mayor was referring regarding UC Berkeley, a goal is not, he used the word a commitment is not a guarantee. So I think it's best to not focus on that fifty percent from the police and focus on what you need to do with developing model or models, which would include the S E U, which I would certainly agree that the downtown Berkeley area is really, really in need of the S E U, a pilot project as soon as possible of that could transpire. I heard one of your commissioners, Pamela Hyde, mentioned what I thought was really important, that she wanted to see a subcommittee regarding dispatcher training. And I thought that went directly to the development of a model and that seemed to be overlooked. It would be good to see you develop on a model. One issue I want to draw to your attention too is really the whole community needs this and the whole community needs an S E U. For example, over a five-year time period, I sent for suicide attempt and threats and gesture statistics three times. And actually, what I wanted to look at was the twenty-four-seven need. But what ended up happening is I found out that this was happening all throughout the city because while you wouldn't get the specific address, you would get an approximate address like twenty-one hundred Shattuck. And there were all these ten fifty-sixes, these suicide threats and attempts that were coming from the hills too. And it was really a shock to me. So it was all throughout the city that we were having some mental health crisis. And so that does need to be addressed. The other thing I wanted to note is I've mentioned victims and witnesses before, and I can't emphasize how important this is. And this does actually impact many of the underserved groups that you're talking about. And I will give you one example in particular where someone I knew who was black or is black was either transgender or perceived to be transgender. I saw her when she was kicked by somebody and she didn't call the police because at a previous situation, which I did not witness, but she had told me about right afterward, soon afterwards, she had been hit by someone, and I will be more specific if someone wants to talk to me about the specific incident, hit by someone in a position of authority, had called the police, had been hit twice in front of two witnesses. And when the police came out, they turned to the person in a position of authority, who was a paid employee somewhere. And that person said, well, all these people are mentally ill. And I believe she was bipolar. But this was directly related to her being transgender or perceived to be transgender. And she was completely dismissed by the police. This is a mentally ill person and they listened instead to the person who hit her. And that's just one example of how critical it is to also consider victims and witnesses and how the police treat them and when it's appropriate for an S E U also to come out in those situations. Is my time up?
Yes.
Okay, then I won't go further. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. We'll now allow in Tai Yu. Tai, you should be able to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Tai Yu. I'm the owner of the Great China Restaurant here in Berkeley. You know, we've been in Berkeley for over thirty-five years. And, you know, as of recently, I just kind of wanted to kind of let you guys in on what we've been going through other than, you know, the more obvious things of issues with COVID and, you know, just slow business. And but on top of that, you know, the instances of just encounters with either, whether it be mentally ill people or people that, you know, seem to be addicted to drugs or whatever it is have increased significantly to the point where, you know, a couple of weeks ago, one of my hosts got assaulted and on the street as she was walking to go close the doors for the front business, which is literally just, you know, just walking around the building. On Bancroft was charged by a gentleman who just for no reason just ran up to her and started swinging on her. And, you know, she started screaming. He said he had a knife. He said he was going to slit her throat. And, you know, this is the kind of stuff we're dealing with on a regular basis. The other day, you know, one of my other hosts was accosted by somebody outside. You know, frequent defecation on my front door of the building. And, you know, although these are kind of sometimes these normal things that we deal with in downtown, unfortunately, they're becoming more and more frequent. And it's definitely noticeable. And it got to the point where I had to buy all of my employees pepper spray because I was just worried about them all the time, even just walking outside of the door. You know, they can't leave by themselves. And we closed the business now so early because of, you know, the new business hours during COVID. And they still, you know, have to watch themselves and leave in groups and kind of, it's like a war zone out here. It's just absolutely nuts. So I just wanted you guys to understand what we're going through on a day-to-day basis over here as merchants in downtown Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now allow in Adam Stemler. Adam, you should be able to speak.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Well, anyway, thanks so much for the time and consideration. Much like Tai, I'm also a business owner in the downtown district of Berkeley, California. I am a co-founder of the Farm League Restaurant Group and we open bars and restaurants all over the Bay Area and other parts of California. I've done consulting all over San Diego, Laguna, New York City, parts of Europe, parts of Mexico, you name it. And I can tell you from not only anecdotal experience, but also just data that we've been collecting since late summer of two thousand and nineteen that merchants in Berkeley deal with a level of terror that I've never seen in another municipality. And I'm not here to point fingers at anyone. I'm just telling you the honest truth. Since late summer of two thousand and nineteen, we have an email chain, and I'll happily share it with anyone who's interested, that accurately documents upwards of fifty criminal acts, most of them being violent acts, ongoing terror, harassment, mentally unstable coming into our storefronts, telling our female managers, I'm going to rape you and then burn you to death. And in the worst cases, felony assaults, concussions, hospitalizations, and even rape in one scenario. And the young woman that was raped while closing her store, that assailant had been terrorizing their storefront for an exceptionally long time before it finally erupted into that. The absolute truth is that Berkeley has taken an apathetic and a passive stance to addressing a number of things that exacerbate crime in our city. And as we reimagine public safety, we need to make sure that we're not paying, overly paying attention to a national narrative while ignoring the problems that exist in our own house. I looked this up and I just wanted to run a couple of statistics by you guys so you know where you live and you know what's going on. Okay, so Berkeley has a crime rate of sixty-five in a thousand, which puts us in the bottom twenty safest cities in the entire state. So we're in the bottom twenty in terms of safety. Berkeley is infinitely more dangerous than cities around the country of comparable size and demographics and population. Our violent crime rate is thirty-three percent above the national average and our total crime rate is a hundred and twenty-five percent above the national average. So I know it feels good to like say these buzzwords about defunding the police and this and that and latching on to national narratives. But the truth is that my community, my merchant community in Berkeley is unbelievably underserved by both our city and our police force. And for those of you guys that, you know, want to get the warm fuzzies about talking about this community and that community, all of the communities that you claim to want to protect are disproportionately represented within the service community. We have a disproportionately high number of gay people. We have a disproportionately high number of Hispanic and Latino people. I can go on and on and on. And at the end of the day, it's these people that are being terrorized on a daily basis because of the apathetic position that Berkeley has taken on a number of different issues. If we are to be serious about reimagining public safety, my recommendation would be, A, we need to take a firm stance against the open-air drug market that exists in Bar Plaza every single day. You can go out there and watch it yourself. Thousands of dollars of drugs and money cross hands between people in Bar Plaza all day long. We allow people to use hard drugs on our street all hours of the day. I see someone smoking crystal methamphetamine on the parkland in front of one of my businesses at least two or three times a month. I've had one person that thinks it's funny to blow crystal meth smoke in my face when I ask them to put it away because it's not safe for families and everything else. So we need to take a hard stance against people using hard drugs on our streets at twenty-four hours a day. And we absolutely need to put pressure on the district attorney, both in our local area and on the state, to kill the revolving door of violent criminals that get arrested and then are right back out on our streets in a matter of hours. My general manager at one of my bars was violently attacked by a mentally unstable woman who smashed his head into a doorway, gave him a very gnarly concussion. She then went inside and started pulling stitches out of a large scar on her arm and threw blood all over a room of fifty-plus people, most of whom were not from the city of Berkeley. They were in town visiting for a concert at the Greek Theater. None of those guests have ever returned to my venue, and I don't think they'll return to downtown Berkeley either. When the paramedics and firefighters finally got there, one of the firefighters started laughing. And I was like, oh, what are you laughing about? And he's like, oh, that's so-and-so. We know her well. And by the way, she's going to be right back out on the street in two hours. So if we're going to allow this type of activity to exist in our streets and we're not going to put pressure on the higher-ups to keep our streets safe, we need to stop printing posters that say Berkeley stands united against hate because hateful acts take place against my community on a weekly basis and no one cares and no one will do anything. So I ask you guys in my final statement before I turn it over, to consider the problems of Berkeley before you latch on to national narratives, to consider your merchant population who have been through the wringer like you would never understand if you're not a small business owner in COVID. We're just not really in a position to get kicked anymore while we've been down and the city of Berkeley has allowed us to get kicked for the better part of four and a half, five years now. This really accelerated in two thousand and sixteen. And we need more presence. We need more police presence in our downtown and Telegraph districts, not less or something. So I'll leave it there and I really appreciate you guys' time and I hope that you lend an empathetic ear and you open your hearts because no one should deal with what we deal with. And I thank you guys.
Thank you, Adam. We'll now allow in Alex Knox. Alex, you should be able to speak.
Hi, my name is Alex Knox. I'm the executive director of the Telegraph Business Improvement District, which serves the South Side Commercial District and adjacent areas along Telegraph Avenue. Pleased to be able to just provide some commentary today. But want to, you know, especially in light of the other comments before me, is just a good reminder that we all play a role and are collectively responsible for public safety. Our commercial districts should absolutely be a central focus of any effort that impacts how crime and threats to public safety are handled. As a leader of a community and business-serving organization, I spend an inordinate amount of time responding to safety concerns and seeking support, as you might imagine. And likewise, for many businesses, the safety of their employees, their customers, and property is their most pressing and challenging issue, even during COVID. I think that's been made evident from the prior comments. The issues before you and the impacts of this important work are greatly relevant to our commercial districts and the stakeholders in them. But also the daily lives of our businesses and their employees. I strongly, strongly encourage you to take the real time to seek out the perspective and insights of our local businesses as part of this process. Be happy to be a partner in that effort and make sure that we're really capturing what the needs are and what public safety means to every community in the city. Thank you.
Before we go to the next speaker, I just want to point out that people are going over their two-minute limit.
We have a timer that we can put up on the screen that'll help us track the time. Shamika, if you wouldn't mind prepping that, I will allow in Alana Auerbach. Thank you, Vice Chair. Alana, you should be in to speak.
Hi, yeah. Hi, this is Elana Auerbach. I've lived in Berkeley for about sixteen or seventeen years and I'm really saddened to hear all the merchants who have spoken about the fear that their employees, that perhaps they themselves and their employees live in and work in. I'm regularly in downtown Berkeley, tending to and supporting the folks who live on the street. And so, and I'm there at all times of the day and I've always felt really safe. And so I feel like there needs to be education, education, there needs to be training, I think. And clearly, we need to have the S E U well-funded, taking care of the community that's down there with long-term care, with housing, with substance abuse, if they want to, you know, end substance use, you know, on demand. All these kinds of things that the S E U, an alternative, police, time after time after time, we've seen data that more police do not create more safety, do not decrease, you know, do not decrease the amount of crimes. So I feel like we need to educate the folks who are working in downtown Berkeley. We need to support them in, you know, maybe a training, maybe this is part of the reimagining public safety, that the people who are working, until we've got the S E U, until we can address and provide long-term care and housing and stable environments for the people who are living on the streets now, that the people who are working in these environments where they live need to have tools and how to respond if they're approached and so forth. So I just want to encourage you to really reimagine as you all are with your incredible imaginations and creativity. That, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now allow in George Lippman. George, you should be able to speak.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to try if we can to depolarize the conversation, if that's possible. Maybe if not just tonight, then in this process. Those of us who want to reimagine policing, we love our small businesses. We enjoy participating in the commerce and the entertainment in all of the business districts of the city. None of us wants crime and we want our community members to be safe and ourselves to be safe. We feel that the way to effectively fight crime, prevent crime, promote safety, is for the police to be doing what they're best at. And to be focused on what's known as constitutional policing. That means obeying the Fourteenth Amendment. That means treating everyone the same regardless of color. And our studies show that that's not happening. Statistics show that's not happening and anecdotes anecdotal testimony shows that that's not happening. We don't want the police to be burdened. I mean this in all seriousness. It's not rhetoric. The police are not trained to be mental health workers. They're not trained to be social workers. And you'll hear them complain about how they're being asked to do all these things that they're not trained for. If a mental health worker is on point for a mental health incident, there's going to be a better ability to judge what should happen and you'll have less of the revolving door that the gentleman spoke of. I really hope that we can have this kind of exchange that's really two-way, not just come listen to me, give my point of view, but let's find a way as a task force to really promote that. And we may not bring everyone into the circle. That may not be possible. However, I think that there's enough people who, who really do have shared needs that, as I'm speaking of, that we can, we can enlarge the circle of the conversation and promote what I think is a task force is intended to promote, which is real solutions that will enhance the, the body politic overall. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Ingrid Chen, allow you in. Ingrid, you should be able to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm a kind of still new with Zoom. So my name is Ingrid Chen. I'm also a merchant in downtown. I've been in business for over 20 years. I run a jewelry design and gift company. But I opened up my store in downtown Berkeley on Oxford Street about 10 years ago. And until last year, late last year, I had to close it. But I do share everything that has been said by any merchant tonight. And I just, I just want, I don't want to repeat anything, but I do just want to emphasize that, you know, pre-pandemic, merchants were, I was complaining about a lot of these issues. My staff was. And, you know, it's just something that when it comes to safety as women, you know, as a woman-owned company, as a company that hires a lot of women, that it's a, it's a big issue. And, you know, when they're not feeling safe, as a retail store, you can imagine that how much lost business I had to deal with just as pre-pandemic because my staff would be scared and they had to close the door. So in like 2019, it got, it was still really bad. It was, you know, we were dealing with dirty streets and we were dealing with, you know, homelessness and, you know, and that's not, you know, those are things that everybody who lives locally or who works locally are very compassionate about, you know, we're, we love and we want our neighborhoods to, like, we want everyone to be safe. We want everyone to be, you know, happy and thriving and so I think, you know, I just want to just highlight the fact that it's, it's true. And I think as women, as a woman, business owner, but also one that has had to help with my staff, you know, cope with having to come to work and being scared, having to come to work and having to close the door. Like, that's a real issue and actually is the reason why I closed my store last year and have decided not to reopen. So.
Hi, my name is Megan Schwartz and I'm a resident of District Eight. And I guess, you know, I would just challenge the group of very capable individuals to think a lot about what does safety really mean for all of us? How can we build an inclusive vision of safety? So, you know, just last week, we saw someone's vision of safety come at the expense of another in Alameda, in the case of Mario Gonzalez. And we have an individual who, you know, just trying to enjoy time in a public park. And someone decided that that was a threat to their safety. And now sadly, Mario is no longer with us. And, you know, so we really have to think about, are the police truly making us safe or is this just a concept, you know, we have built up? You know, how can we, as a community, provide alternatives that really truly provide safety for everyone? I think we have to look at models that are going on now, like MH First in Sacramento and Oakland. There are alternatives. There are things we can do as community members to work with one another, to know our neighbors, to look out for each other, instead of thinking that someone with a badge and a gun is the only way to provide true safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no more raised hands, Chair Mizell.
Thank you. I love when Zoom praises on you. So yeah, let's continue to the, our first item then. And if I can, they go, there it is. Okay. Sorry about the hooks. There we go. Moving on to our community survey discussion, Mr. White and Ms. Cole.
Chair Mizell, we have to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Oh, I am so sorry. Oh yeah, so moving to approve the minutes. Commissioners, please feel free to take a quick second to look over the minutes if you haven't already. See any mistakes, name misspellings, all things used to happen. And if not, we can proceed to approval. Commissioner Echegu.
I believe I saw a mistake in the minutes. I don't know if it's been changed since I viewed it, but Commissioner Malvito was mistitled as mayor. Congratulations, Acthar.
You guys didn't know about that one? Thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you. Anything else? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Just, I, I see your, your point. All that is, is recognizing that Commissioner Malvito is the, if you're looking at the first page, is the appointee of the mayor.
Thank you for clearing that for me. Then I take back what, I rescind my comment.
Okay, we should, a motion to approve. We approve the minutes. Most frequently often, second from Mr. Malvito. We can call the roll.
Commissioner Fine?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chima?
Yes.
Commissioner Dangerfield? Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Lindheim? Commissioner Lindheim? Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Gosh?
Yes.
Mr. Echegu?
Yes.
Commissioner Optin?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake? Is absent. Commissioner Polk? Commissioner Malvito?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ho?
Yes.
Commissioner Letzger?
Yes.
Chair Mizell?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. And now we'll go to our first item, community survey discussion. Ms. Cole, feel free to take over.
I'll, I'll jump on in. Chair Vice Chair, members of the commission, thank you very much for allowing us just to speak real quick. So on the community survey, I just wanted to give you a quick update. I want to express a deep gratitude to the Community Engagement Subcommittee. As some of you may or may not be aware, but they met on multiple occasions and reviewed the survey and provided some wonderful feedback to both Shamika and myself. And we have been going over all that feedback. And what we wanted to do was just take a moment and just sort of reflect back on some of the feedback that we've received from the Subcommittee and the Task Force as well. This is by no means comprehensive because there was a lot of wonderful feedback. But what we're doing right now is digesting that feedback and working with Broadblyt Research Group and National Institute Criminal Justice Reform and revising that survey in response. So what we're primarily doing, first of all, is we're looking at the objectives of the survey itself, as we discussed at our earlier task force meeting and the purpose for having the survey. And we are really trying to frame a lot of the feedback in that light. We heard very clearly about a need to ensure that the survey was available, not only for folks who live in Berkeley, but also folks who work in Berkeley as well and consider thoughtfully about folks who may have been forced to move out of the community for a variety of reasons. We heard some very strong comments regarding inclusion, not only thinking about the demographic piece of the survey as well, but also thinking about how really questions are framed to ensure that there's a space for folks of various communities to engage in the survey as well and feel that they have a chance to reflect their experiences. We got some great comments about the scales and I apologize, I am by no means a survey expert around Likert Scales, but we heard some great feedback around making sure that those scales are appropriately measured and that the categories reflect best practices. We got some good input and feedback around ensuring that there is some language around confidentiality in the survey for people who are responding to it as well as providing contact information. So we're looking at that as well. We got some good feedback from the Subcommittee about taking a fresh look at certain questions that were in the survey, about removing certain questions. So we're looking at that as well. And we also got some wonderful feedback really around taking a thoughtful approach around ensuring that the survey provides an opportunity for folks to really reflect their personal experience. And we're taking a thoughtful approach to revising questions in that domain as well. We're also thinking a lot about the survey and making sure that there's an opportunity and space in the survey for folks to give input about what it means to reimagine public and community safety so that there's an opportunity to provide space for thinking about the totality of what that means to individuals. So what we're endeavoring to do right now is take all that feedback and develop a revised survey. My hope is that for the folks who are part of the Community Engagement Subcommittee, that we'll be able to bring forward a revised draft to them to take a look at and see if there's any input that we missed. Obviously, we're doing our best to be as inclusive as possible. So we have to be careful about thinking about the variety of different avenues and pathways we're getting feedback. So we may not be able to meet everyone all the way, but we're hoping to meet as many people as far as we possibly can. And then we hope to bring the survey back to this task force on May 13th to reflect back all the input and changes that have been made. So that's our update for the task force on the survey. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any questions? That was a very good update. Okay, seeing none, we can.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't raise my, like, physically raising my hand. I wanted to request that staff find a way to coordinate with the Burke dot survey that's supposedly going out. We heard at the Transportation Commission meeting that Public Works was going to put out a survey related to Burke dot. And we've had such good learnings from this process. Could you please make sure that you all communicate on that and find a way to review that? And I don't know if this committee is willing to, but if it could be brought to this survey committee as well to ensure some consistency and, you know, I, I think that this would be a good place to coordinate. So I just want to recommend that we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White, first we have one hand public comment from Carol Morosy on this item.
Okay, let me bring her in. Thank you. Carol, you should be able to speak.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about distribution of the survey. One of the issues is many people don't belong to organizations. And I believe it's important to also identify, and I know this is difficult, a way to reach people who are normally not joiners and would have concerns within the community and need to be reached. I also hope that you, when you distribute the survey, you also reach out to persons who have physical disabilities. I believe that you've already identified that you will reach out to people with mental health issues, but people who have physical disabilities and one culture, and it is a culture, is the deaf culture. And they are very leery of many systems and and the responsiveness or lack of responsiveness to them. And so I believe you should definitely reach out to a spokesperson for the deaf culture, someone from Berkeley Place. That's pretty much why, what I wanted to speak to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comment? Pop hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. White. Okay, it looks like we are ready to move on to our next item. The Calls for Service Analysis. If I are very own city auditor, Madam City Auditor?
Hi, good evening. I wanted to first introduce my team. I have Erin Mullin with me tonight, who's the senior auditor on the project. And also Alejandra Goryoborsky, Mario Gorski, sorry, who started with us a little while ago. And so Erin will be presenting the screen and I will get started with the presentation. And thank you so much for inviting us to attend. Fantastic. All right. Well, thank you so much. Earlier, I guess just last week, we released our report, which for the first time provides a review of all police responses to calls for service and officer-initiated stops in the city of Berkeley. It is an 80-page report. It's quite long. What I will do is share some of the highlights with you tonight, including why we did this audit, our objectives, findings, recommendations, and the response from the police department. First, let me do a introduction. Next slide. So let me just quickly introduce myself. For those who don't know me, I am Jenny Wong, the your elected city auditor, which means I run the city auditor's office for the city of Berkeley. A bit about my background, I came to this office with 18 years of experience at the United States Government Accountability Office. These are the federal government auditors, auditors for Congress, where I conducted similar work at the federal level. I also trained other auditors. I'm an immigrant, grew up with my family managing motels. So I have interacted with a diverse group of people. I have a degree from Cal, majoring in economics and a master's in public administration from NYU. I'm also a 26-year Berkeley resident. Let me tell you a little bit about the city auditor's office. So as you can see in the slide, we provide independent oversight of city operations. Our mission is to to promote the accountability and transparency in Berkeley government. We are, we have to do this according to government auditing standards and we're here to provide the city, the public, the council, the city management with objective, timely and accurate information about city program performance. And by providing this information and making recommendations for improvement, we help hold the government accountable in the stewardship of public services. We're a pretty small shop. There's five of us when we're fully staffed and we work on all kinds of audits throughout the year. We fast-tracked this police data audit so that we could share it with you. at this meeting to support the community-wide process on public safety reimagining. Next slide. So last year, following the murder of George Floyd, a national conversation ensued around policing, race, how cities should best address mental health and safety issues. The Berkeley City Council held several meetings and we had hundreds of community members provide input. Council member Ben Bartlett proposed collecting and analyzing data around police activities as part of a process with the public to discuss changes to public safety in Berkeley. We offered to conduct this analysis. Mayor Jesse Aragine incorporated this request for this analysis into the Safety for All George Floyd Community Safety Act, which item on policing that city council passed in 2020 of July. This report is intended to give decision-makers and the public a broad overview of calls for service, officer-initiated stops and police response and to help inform the community engagement process around reimagining policing in Berkeley. So these are our objectives. One, what are the characteristics of calls for service to which Berkeley police respond? Two, what are the characteristics of officer-initiated stops by Berkeley police? Three, how much time do officers spend responding to calls for service? Four, how many calls for service are related to mental health and homelessness? And five, can the city improve the transparency of police department calls through the city of Berkeley's open data portal? So next, I'm going to go through some background information for you to give you some context. So our methodology included being policies and we did a lot of cleaning of the data set from the department. We looked at data that included events that have responses that included at least one sworn Berkeley police officer. I want to make sure to note that the call types that we'll be presenting does not necessarily mean that it is a crime. It is the call type that has been identified at the by the time before the officer arrives on scene. And then what we've done is we've sized the 138 call types into what we call the city auditor classifications. And these include violent crimes, which are FBI Part I crimes. Number two, property crimes, which include, are also the other part of FBI Part I crimes. Three, FBI Part II crimes. Four, community call types. Five, medical or mental health. Six, traffic-related. Seven, informational or administrative. And eight, investigative or operational. And actually, it should be a separate one. Number nine is alarm. So what we did to do our work was consult with a wide range of experts and stakeholders. This is part of what auditors do. We like to talk with a lot of people to ensure that we're complete in how we are doing our work. So this is a listing of folks that are in Berkeley and outside of Berkeley that we spoke to. Next slide. So here's a little information about the data background. We analyzed the Berkeley Police Department computer-aided dispatch. This is called the CAD data. From 2015 to 2019, we explored various models for categorizing and characterizing data on police activities. As I said, we consulted with a range of stakeholders and subject matter experts. The purpose of this process was to ensure that we presented the data in a way that is accurate, clear, and as easy to understand as possible. This audit does not propose recommendations with regard to police activities or personnel allocations because this task force is conducting this separate ongoing process today and ongoing. Given the timing of the process and scope of this report, we did not do an in-depth analysis of alternative police policies or approaches to policing. However, we do make recommendations aimed at making the data more transparent and available to the public. And I wanted to just state that we do look at the data. One thing to note about the data is that it is based on information that's entered by dispatchers and officers into the CAT system. We did not do a thorough review, looking at that data in detail from an accuracy perspective. We did look at the data and divide it into three different ways. We looked at events and these refer to situations that are entered into the CAT system that resulted in a response by at least one sworn officer. Number two, we looked at officer-initiated stops. This refers to the number of individuals detained by the department. This means that there could be more than one individual stopped at event. And number three, we looked at characteristics of police responses that includes data on personnel, which includes both sworn and non-s sworn personnel. And again, I think I stated this already, we look at a five-year date range in our data set. Next slide. So this is a chart looking at the department's process for responding to calls. The process for responding to events reflects the interactions between community members, the department's communication center, and the responding officers that tend to the calls. The Berkeley Police Department uses CAD, as I said, to prioritize and record events, track the status and location of officers in the field, and effectively dispatch personnel. It is crucial to remember that the response process involves situations that are evolving and often requires fast action before all the information about the situation is known. CAD is not necessarily optimized to give responders all of the information they need before arriving at the scene. We, in this chart, look at four different processes. We look at the events and the pre-scene, on-scene, and post-scene. And I'll just make a quick comment about the pre-scene event. I'm sorry, when an event comes to the Berkeley Communication Center, either through a caller and you can see here, you have emergency line, non-emergency line, call due to an alarm, or CHP. Events can also be initiated by an officer. These are officer-initiated stops. Or a resident flags down the officer that's on duty. The pre-scene takes place when the calls come into the call taker from the caller and that an event is then created at that point in time. And that call taker may send that information to the dispatcher, at which point the dispatcher assigns a call type, priority, resources, and dispatches an officer or a supporting unit. It updates that record ongoing. And officers can also dispatch for self-initiated stops. And all of that information, even during a self-initiated stop, is called into the dispatcher and recorded in the CAD data set. Next slide. I wanted to just highlight the communication center. So I talked about the call taker and the dispatcher. I did a sit-along at the communication center and it was very informative to observe so many things happening within the communication center for a dispatcher in taking that call, assigning patrol officers in different locations, knowing who is tied up with what event at that point in time. One thing to note is that the, you know, we did this audit looking, I think it was last year, looking at the 911 Communication Center and staffing. And the dispatchers, you know, play a very crucial role in this whole process. They have a lot of authority to determine the call type and in making those split-second decisions in assigning resources and what to do on a call. Next slide. So here, I'm just finishing up the slide on the process and sharing that on scene, you know, an officer arrives, there could be a backup officer that's dispatched. There could be other units dispatched. And then, and some of those other units include, you know, can include Mobile Crisis or the Traffic Bureau. You see officers. And then finally, there's a post-scene, which includes reports for any event. It could also include disposition information, including stop dispositions. It can include a mental health report, or it could also include crime reports. And there could obviously be follow-up investigations conducted after the event. All right. So moving on to characteristics of events. So in this section, I'm going to talk about the characteristics of events. This is, if you're looking at the report, page 13. And what we did was look at 360,242 events. So I'm going to now show you some of the data highlights. And what we see here is that the top 10 call types account for 54% of all calls for service and officer-initiated stops. Again, just to remind folks that stop data is part of the entire set of call data because it's part of the CAD data set. Every traffic stop, every officer-initiated stop has to get called into the communication center it entered as an event. These top 10 events include traffic stops, disturbance, audible alarm, noise, disturbance, security check, welfare check, parking violations, suspicious circumstance, trespassing, and theft. According to the data, there are 138 unique call types. What we did was we consolidated these call types into nine descriptive categories for reporting purposes. And if you're interested in finding out what calls make up each of these categorizations, you can take a look at Appendix G on page 75. And we detail a lot of information, but also include what makes up traffic-related, what makes up community FBI Part II crimes, et cetera. This table shows a frequency of events organized by these classifications that you see in front of you. Note that while many crime call types fall within the FBI Part II crimes, 60% of those events are either in the disturbance or trespassing category. Also important to note is that this is how the call center receives the call and how they're classified. It is possible that something is logged as a Part II crime, for example, that does not turn out to be criminal. Likewise, something that could be logged in in some other category, but then turns out that it leads to the documentation of a Part II crime. This overall trend of frequency of events was steady for the data period. Next slide. This figure breaks down the source of events by the three main categories: emergency line, the non-emergency line, officer-initiated, and other. It shows the majority of events stem from the non-emergency line. This figure shows the initiation source for each of the call type classifications. The vast majority of traffic stops are officer-initiated. The traffic classification includes call types in addition to stops, such as parking violations and traffic hazards. Next slide. This figure here, we're looking at events by priority level. And what these are, are these are assigned priority levels. So events with priority levels that requires a dispatch within 20 minutes constitutes 56% of all events, while calls requiring a response time of 16 minutes or longer account for 44% of the events. So let me now talk, switch and talk about our next section, which is on officer-initiated stops. And in this section, we are looking at the stops associated with 56,070 individuals that were stopped. So what we see here is that 78% of the stops were vehicle stops. That made up the majority of the stops relative to bike stop, pedestrian stop, and suspicious vehicle. I wanted to note that the stop section of 56,070 individuals stopped is related to 53,297 events. All right, next section. This figure shows the distribution by race within each type of stop. So you can see here among bike stop, pedestrian stop, suspicious vehicle, and vehicle stop, what the breakdown is by race. Next figure. With regard to race, our data mirrored a data by the Center for Policing Equity report that was released a few years ago. The department stopped Black and Hispanic individuals at higher rates than their representation in the population. Black individuals significantly so. The department stopped white and Asian individuals at lower rates. We did not conduct an analysis further with regards to the interpretation of this data, but it is similar in the conclusions by the Center for Policing Equity. Next slide. This is looking at search data. So this is looking at searches resulting from officer-initiated stops by race. And it shows a similar number of white and black people were stopped, but black people were more than twice as likely to be searched than white people when stopped. Hispanics also were searched at a higher rate. Next slide. This figure shows the enforcement outcomes of searches that resulted from officer-initiated stops by race. So when someone is searched, these are the resulting outcomes. And it shows that when searched, most of the time, a warning is given regardless of race. It also shows that white and Asian people are more likely to get arrested. I think the number is 25% compared to Black and Hispanic people, which is, I believe, 19 and 20%. I believe CPE also noted similar patterns. There has been some action taken by council, I believe in February, to address some of the issues that were raised in this way. And, you know, I am very interested to see the outcomes and tracking the policy outcomes based on some of the changes that were made to make sure that we do treat everyone equally in Berkeley. So I want to move now to the characteristics of police responses. This is looking at police responses in Berkeley by personnel. So if you go to the next slide, this gives you a breakdown of the responses by the type of unit. Again, our data set includes looking at anything that has at least one sworn officer response. So, you know, anytime that that happens, you see that there is also, there's police officer response, and then there's also other units that are in addition to that. And it shows that 82% of the events had a response from a patrol officer. Next slide. So this is looking at responses to events by the other unit. So this is that small category of 5% of additional units that responded to an event. event. And you see everything from parking enforcement officers, the bike unit, to mobile crisis team that that are part of the responses. Next slide. This figure shows a breakdown of events by the number of responding personnel. The number of personnel who responded to an event can vary depending on the call type. You have eighty eight percent of events had fewer than five personnel respond. Next slide. Now we're going to look at the characteristics of the police response. This figure shows an overview of the time that officers and other personnel spend responding to events for each call type classification. So this is represented as percentage of the total time spent at, at all of the events. So it's taking all of the events together and then breaking it down by community, traffic, medical, mental health, et cetera. There are other things that officers do outside of responding to calls and stops, such as, you know, report writing, patrolling, and that is not part of this report. And I just wanted to note that twenty four percent of police time, actually just twenty four, is it twenty four percent of time responding to events is in the traffic related categories, and an equal amount of time is spent on the community and FBI part two crime events. So I'm now going to turn to our next section, which is on the section on tracking mental health and homelessness data. And what we found is that the department can better track mental health and homeless, homeless calls. So what we, what we ultimately found is that we could not determine the number of mental health or homeless calls related to the calls for service. We asked the question of, then we asked the question of, well, where did the data on mental health calls come from? And we looked at the data set in CAD, and the data does not readily result in the number of calls related to mental health or homelessness. So I'm going to just walk you through what we did. The, the data didn't give us this information. So what we did was we looked to see if we could approximate in some way, at least get a glimpse as to what the data could tell us about mental health calls and homeless calls. It was not possible to determine this. And what we did was look at, we looked at a variety of things. We looked at the mental health related events in the narrative reports. So there's a narrative field in which personnel can and dispatchers can type in information. So we consulted with a wide range of stakeholders to identify mental health terms. It did a search. We also looked at the mental health disposition. As I said, at the end of an event, a disposition can be checked off for a mental health call and filed by an officer. So we looked at anything that had that. We also looked at any mental health related call types, which include the fifty one fifties and suicide related call types. And then finally, we looked at anything that had a mobile crisis response. And I just want to make sure to note that, you know, there were obviously more mobile crisis events that do not involve a sworn officer, but that was not part of our data set. So there could be more mobile crisis calls that that are out there. We took the unduplicated count of all these events, and we found that approximately eleven point seven percent of the events are mental health related. This is an undercount. As I said, the, this is our best guess as to probably the lower bound, but this is, this is not a good estimate of the, the mental health calls that that come forward. Next slide. We did something similar with the homelessness calls, and we looked at the narrative reports. We looked at the call type lodging in public, and we came up with six percent. Again, I think this is an undercount of the calls that are homeless. Next slide. So our next section is around the open data portal. And, you know, we asked the question of what can be improved among the calls for service. The city of Berkeley launched the open data portal pilot in December of 2014 with the goal of providing non confidential public data for unrestricted use. The department captures events in their calls for service data on the portal. The data, the data that is shared on the data portal, we found that it did not include all available data fields. It does not include all call types. I believe it's more crime related call types, and it only goes back one hundred and eighty days. So we found that that was a limitation. And so what we did is we're recommending two things that Berkeley Police Department identify, all calls for service that have an apparent mental health and or homelessness component to it. You know, there's already a mechanism for tracking the mental health calls, but there is not a, it is not being filled out consistently. And so we're asking that that information be made when, when it's, when it's apparent that that information be captured, so that we have a better understanding as to the magnitude of these types of calls. And number two, we recommend that the department expand the current calls for service data that's available on the city's open data portal, so that it can be made available to the public for as many years as possible. We did not propose further recommendations on police activities or personnel actions. And, and hopefully this will help inform future recommendations. So the management response, they, the department agreed with our audit findings, conclusions, or recommendations, and provided an action plan to address our recommendations. And I just wanted to finally just thank the department for working with us in cooperation on this audit. We asked a lot of questions, and they made themselves available to answer our questions, and I'm very appreciative of, of that. I also wanted to just thank my audit team, Aaron Mullin, Caitlin Palmer, or my senior auditors, and Ale, who crunched the data and also did the Spanish translation. Thank you so much for all of your work. So that concludes my presentation and here to answer any questions.
Yes, thank you, Madam C. Auditor. Certainly, I think all of us appreciate the presentation. Commissioner Fine.
Yeah, I wanted to know, in the call types, how, well, how does it deal with substance use? I mean, I saw mental health.
Yeah, we did not, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we did not look at substance use separately. We, we focused our analysis looking at mental health and and homeless data.
So substance use could be in it, but it just hasn't been extracted?
Correct.
Commissioner Hargreaves.
I wonder if you have any ideas how we could ascertain to a reasonable degree of certainty what percent of calls are mental health calls, given that is such a big part of this reimagining process? I wonder if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, that's the question that we tried to answer. And, you know, the, the, the data just was not sufficient to answer that question. And so we tried to approximate as best as we could. But we know that that data is undercounted because in the, even the narrative data that we have, you know, the, the call type data for fifty one fifties, the, the narrative data doesn't, not everything on the narrative data would lead you to know that it was a mental health related call. So we know from that, looking at that data in that way, that it's not easy to approximate. And there could be other call types that pertain to mental health, even if it's not primarily mental health. So it's, yeah, this is an area where I think it would be great to get better information and better data to approximate the number of mental health calls.
Commissioner Malvita.
Hi, Ms. Wong, thank you so much for the presentation. It was super informational, and I really, really appreciate the translation to Spanish that you also provided. That's wonderful and a great step in inclusion. You mentioned something about mental health data currently there being some mechanism that is not utilized all the time, or it's not properly filled out. Can you tell us what that mechanism is? And if the police department has responded to that specifically?
Yeah, so there is currently a mental health disposition code that, that an officer can check. It's like a, you know, it's like a checkbox. They can check that disposition code to identify the call as mental health. And that information is just not captured every time. It's not just, it's not used consistently. I believe the response to our report is that, is that there, they can do some more training on how to better fill out that information and provide that information so that there can be a better and more accurate way of calculating those mental health calls. In addition, we don't, you know, there's not a code that signifies when there's a need for a mobile crisis. So there's, you know, there's just limitations to what we can provide on that data, but hopefully that answers your question.
It, it does, it does. And actually, it kind of led to another question of, you know, some kind of training or bringing people up to speed in terms of using this correctly. Is there any data that you saw perhaps in the mental health calls that specified perhaps a spectrum of what kind of mental health call it was? Whether it was, say, on the spectrum of one end being a mental health crisis versus another being something else, just as an example?
Yeah, we did not look at the, we did not do a deep dive in looking at all the narrative reports for the mental health data. But, you know, that can, that can certainly, someone can certainly go deeper and look at what are the characteristics of these types of mental health calls. That just wasn't something that we were able to do within the timeframes that we had. But, but yeah, someone can do a deep dive into looking at these mental health calls in detail.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner, hi.
Thank you, Jenny, for this fantastic analysis, and I can imagine it must have taken a lot of time. I have about five questions, and I'd be happy to go last, just in case others catch these questions too. Or I can just go rapid fire, and you can give me just quick one sentence answers, and I'll get through my five. Is that comfortable, Jenny?
Sure.
Great. Are the nine categories that you reduced to, so your auditor's categories, not the one hundred and some odd categories, are those new? Let me ask that a different way. In other words, can we go back to pre 2015 data using these categories and, and watch this, do the same analysis to see longer patterns? Or is that not possible because these are new?
I believe that, I would think that most of the categories are the same, but I think there has been some changes to some of the categories. But I think that's probably a better question to ask the department, who has more knowledge about the history of the specific categories. But, you know, a lot of these major categories like disturbance and, you know, these, the part one crimes, that's not going to change. I mean, those are categories that are gonna always be those same categories. And, and when I say categories, I mean call types. The classifications, that was just a way to help chunk the information, to help folks better understand what the data together looked like. That is by no means, you know, any recommendations associated. This is a, you know, we consulted with a range of experts. For example, we spoke to, you know, age analytics and different auditor organizations. And we applied much of the way that they do their classification data. But we, you know, we, we try to make it in a way that would make it easy to kind of better understand and chunk the information. So hopefully that helps answer that question.
That makes sense, leading to my next question. So those nine categories that you guys developed by talking to a lot of experts, thank you for that. Do those nine categories that you decided on, that we've chunked the Berkeley data into, does that fit up and out into other counties, other states, and at a federal level? Can we then compare ourselves in a more apples to apples way because you've chosen these nine categories?
Um, I, what I'm going to say is that the, every, every person does it a little bit differently. So I think at a broader level, they might, there might be comparisons that make sense. But every group seems to do it slightly differently. And I know for Berkeley, I wanted to make sure that there was a medical and mental health category, because I know that's, that's a, you know, something of large community interest. So it's often, you know, tailored to what the needs are within the specific community. The, the creation of the categories and the call type, the creation of these classifications, they are, it's really to help you simplify and enable. So I, I, you know, I would caution against comparing against another city or county unless you know the variety of call types that make up that particular classification.
That seems a shame. I'm sure all the municipalities feel like it would be nice if there were some systematized rigor to the database that we could all feed into. What, is there any sense of urgency about the training to resolve of some of this? You mentioned that, that, that somebody can do training to try and get the input rigorous. Who's in charge of that, and is there any urgency feeling to it?
You're talking about the recommendation on capturing the mental health data and information?
Well, that and everybody, so from the dispatchers through the officers, everybody who's inputting this data should have the same, same sheet of numbers and categories that, that they've been trained to use to decipher. Is there a sense of urgency, and who owns doing that training?
So the, the department responded and said that there is a six month implementation timeline. So, and, and our, our audits, the requirement is to have the department respond and send a report to council every six months about the implementation. So I'm hoping to see progress in this manner within six months.
So BPD owns this training, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and they will be reporting back in six months after having begun the training now?
Um, I'm not sure about when they would start the training, but they are to report back in six months about the progress. And I believe they stated implementation. date of six months. So hopefully we'll see something in six months.
I'll hold my questions there. Thank you very much.
Sure. I just wanted to quickly respond about the classifications to Pamela before we move on, that it is, if you look at our classifications, they are very similar to Austin. And they are also similar to, I believe, Philadelphia.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask what cities are doing this well, because you reached out to a lot of experts and, you know, let's learn. Let's not take the time to recreate the wheel. Let's learn from other folks who are also working on this.
Commissioner Lindheim.
So I'll echo that this is a great piece of work. I particularly commend you that the the open data portal had basically twenty two thousand incidents a year, and you've come up with seventy two thousand incidents a year. So obviously you did a heroic job to discover the difference between those fifty thousand incidents a year. So I'm quite, quite pleased with that. I did a little bit of just sort of simple arithmetic, and I wanted to see whether that arithmetic comports with common sense. And so the the seventy two thousand events per year, if you divide by a hundred patrol officers, not the entire force, but just patrol officers works out to seven hundred and twenty events per officer. If you assume that officers basically work somewhere in the vicinity of two hundred and twenty days, that works out to be three or four incidents per day per officer. Now, number one, my question is, does BPD think that that makes intuitive sense? Or is that an indication that maybe there's a lot of data that's missing? And then I'm a little unclear about the word response versus incident. So is response, when two officers respond to an incident, that that would be two responses rather than one? Is that correct? So that, that would change the arithmetic a little bit. So if you based on the three hundred, you based on the seventy two thousand events per year, it would come up to three or four. If you'd based it on responses, then it would somewhere between might double that. But in any case, it would only still only be six or so responses per, per, per shift. And I'm just wondering whether that means that there's data that's missing, that officers do things, that's not do things that is not captured in this data? Or other explanations such might be less charitable? But I'm assuming that, you know, in a shift, that there's a lot of activity that goes on, but I'm not sure that it's fully captured by the data. And I'm just wondering any thoughts that you have about why that might be?
Well, good questions, Commissioner Lindheim. The, the first question about staffing, we did not look at the, the staffing levels. So I, I you know, I think that, that question is probably best directed at the department to look at your estimates and whether or not that makes sense. You know, as we stated, the data is as good as we got, we got it. So we just produced what was available to us and and I, you know, I don't know how complete it is. I, I don't know. We didn't do any work looking at the completeness of the data set. So when you ask, you ask the question of how complete it is, my answer is I don't know. You also ask, you ask about the the, the personnel count. We cannot equate the police officer count with the personnel count in the report. We can, we can do it based on responses, but the data does not enable us to calculate the response per individual officers. But, you know, the CAD data is mostly patrol officer activity. So yeah, and yeah, it's very interesting, you know, I think you make some good points about calculating the events per officer per day. I think I did a backhand calculation. I think I came up with something around, was it two hundred or so approximately events per day? But I didn't, I didn't look at that per officer. We didn't look at the staffing in detail in that way.
Okay, so I mean, anyway, so the real question is, but BP didn't respond saying that what you had come forward with didn't make sense. I mean, they, they just seemed to accept it and they didn't, they didn't push back about any of that.
No, we, we worked with the department. They had a chance to review our findings and conclusions and, and recommendations, and they gave us input on, provided us with input and feedback on some of that. And there was no, and they agreed to all of the data findings and conclusions.
Yeah, I just have one last question. And in, in trying to figure out the mental health data, how much of the mental health, let me be careful how I say this, of the data points that are captured by dispatch, what, how much of what you considered to be mental health was captured by dispatch? So really what my question is, at what point does somebody know that a mental health call is a mental health call? Do you know at the time of dispatch? Or do you have to actually send somebody to the scene before you really know that something is a mental health call? Because obviously, if you don't know, then you have to be careful about who you're dispatching. Whereas if you do know that it's just so and so who everybody knows is a mental health call, then you'd feel much easier dispatching a, let's say, a, a mental health team, as opposed to something that after the fact turns out to have been mental health, but initially somebody called it in as, you know, something dangerous or something, whatever.
Yeah, well, the, the data that we looked at spans all the way from when the call comes in, all the way to the end of the event. The, the the dispatcher who may, you know, who's the one that's, that's going to send the officer, the, the call type is sort of locked in, or that's how it was explained to me, it's determined before the officer arrives on scene. So whatever information that is available is, that's provided and the, the call type is determined prior to the officer that arrives on scene. So if there's a mental health related event and that's in the CAD system at that point in time, then that will be made available. But sometimes it's after arrival on scene that the mental health situation is revealed. You know, there could be, it could be one call type and then and then once an officer arrives on scene, it then becomes another, really another type of situation. So the, the information is, is presented is what's available prior to the officer arrives. And, you know, we do, we do look at the response process. And there is no data entry in CAD that integrates all of these different steps. So all we know is the call type, which actually can change throughout the course of the time between when the call started and when the officer arrives on scene. And then we have, you know, these disposition information. Once an officer arrives on scene, the situation could change and vary and, and and, and it could be a, a mental health related call, but that information might not be revealed until after arrival on scene.
So let me, let me just, just twenty more seconds about this. So if dispatch is gonna dispatch a team, let's say the SCU, they're gonna presumably have to know at the point of dispatch that this is an SCU kind of call. So what I'm trying to get at is, do you have any sense of what portion or what percentage of the calls that turn out to be mental health, at least by your calculation, were known to be mental health at the time of dispatch?
No, I, I, I don't know that information.
And, and you, you don't have that data in, in the report or is in your data?
You know, it's not something that we could, that we looked at, but you could potentially review the narrative data up until the point in which an officer is dispatched and look at that detail to see if something is mental health related. That's probably the best that you can do to, to get at that question that you're asking.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hargreer.
Thank you. I, so your report shows, and I didn't thank you for all of your hard work, and now I feel like I definitely should. Thank you for all of your hard work, very much so appreciated. It says that a lot of these calls are routed through Berkeley non emergency. And I was wondering if there's any way to break down what those calls are. And I also forgive my ignorance, is there any response team aside from the police that responds to non emergency calls? Or is it that you call Berkeley non emergency and are immediately routed to the police?
We, so you're asking about the non emergency line and whether you can break down that data. So we did not look at the breakdown of that data. But I believe that you can look at those specific calls and see what, what those constitute. The non emergency line is, you know, it still goes to the communication center, which is part of the department. And not, not all of the non emergency lines result in a dispatch. But, yeah, I think in theory you should be able to break that data down further. Can you repeat your other question?
You answered them both. I was just asking if there's a way to have a non police response to Berkeley non emergency calls.
Okay. Yeah.
Commissioner Ho.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation and for answering all the questions. I have two. So if the department is to implement, fully implement the identification of calls to at least identify them as apparently related to mental health or, or have a homelessness component, how long would you need to collect this data to have a representative sample? And my second question is a follow up to Commissioner Lindheim's question, which is, you know, if something is not identified as a mental health call at dispatch, and then later turns out to be, is that something that the department, and this may be a department question, is that, that something that's gonna be part of their implementation? Are they gonna try to track that data going forward?
Yeah, I think we would need to study the data more to really understand how long it would take to to, to, to see the, to be able to see what that, what that data looks like. You know, our recommendation was to ask the department to start that training and implement that collection of mental health data. And I, you know, I, I'm, I'm curious to see if they can implement that. And, you know, it does take time to, to make sure that you're training everyone, to make sure that they are collecting that information as robustly as possible. So I think we would just need to study that more and, and see what that will look like.
If I may be able to say something here. There is a, there, thank you. There is a mental health disposition code at the end of the call. But to, to answer the question that was posed previously, we get the information based upon the caller. It might be somebody that we have familiarity with and know that there might be mental health issues involved. But there's other parts, other calls that we may respond to that come in as a disturbance, maybe a verbal disturbance or a disturbance of some sorts. And then upon the officers arriving at the scene, they're gonna determine that the primary factor involved in this call was a mental health related call. So if the person is placed on a hold, the disposition code should be then changed, you know, might have come in as a, a four fifteen or disturbance. But at, at the end of the call, it's gonna be dispoed out as an MH, if the MH call, if the person was put on a hold.
And sorry, just to be clear, when you say hold, you mean a fifty one fifty hold?
Correct, like a fifty one fifty psychiatric hold.
Thank you. Commissioner Ho, do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Malvita.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. I had a question about the report itself. You, there was a number on here, I think twenty eight percent of the personnel responses per event were between three to five different personnel. And then you had twenty seven percent two personnel and then thirty three percent one personnel. And I wanted to ask you if it was possible, or if, if you had this already, what percentage of the eleven point seven percent of mental health crisis response and also, or mental health response? And the six percent of homelessness calls were responded to by more than three people?
That's a good question, but it wasn't something we looked at. So we, it's, it's doable to look at in the database. But it wasn't something that we looked at, we broke that, we did not break down the data in that way.
I understand. Thank you. That, that'd be great to know that. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Austin.
See, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good. I'd like to comment on the report. I've, I've had the occasion in the last forty years to read many audit reports by various agencies and auditors, and this one is certainly one of the most intelligently planned and thoroughly carried out audit reports that I've ever encountered. So I commend the, the department and Ms. Wong for producing it. While we've been discussing the report, it took a minute to break the numbers down to incidents per day, because I think that's a more understandable way to think about it. The, the five years that the report covered comprised eighteen hundred and twenty five days. So if we divide the six hundred and forty six thousand nine hundred and fifty eight responses in the five years to days, it comes out to three hundred and fifty four per day average. That's a lot of police responding. It seems to me clearly the, the Berkeley Police Department is not sleeping on the job. They're not all holed up in their police department and not going out and doing things. They're, they're doing things to the extent of the average, on the average of three hundred and fifty four per day and, and stopping an average of thirty individuals per day. So how can we square that with the statements made by the, the two restaurant people at the beginning of our meeting this evening? Who reported, you know, unbearable harassment of their, of them and their employees? I can't believe that that's typical of, of many other cities in the United States, and it makes me wonder And it makes me wonder, what is making Berkeley different in that respect? And what would it take to change that? And I think that's a tough question. I don't, I don't have the answer to give you. But my hunch is that we will not find the answers to that in the kind of data that can be audited. We may find some answers by going to talking to some of the people who are on the positive end of what the restaurant owners were complaining about, if they are willing to talk. And I expect that some of them would be willing to talk and to find out why they are in Berkeley, rather than in Los Angeles or in San Leandro or in Eureka. They have their reasons and that could be very informative. Then there may be other ways to look into it too. But overall, it seems to me that the results of the audit indicate that intensification of policing in Berkeley, just doing what we're doing, but doing it more, is not likely to solve the problems that the restaurant people were complaining about at the beginning of our meeting. We've got to look into this deeper and I hope that we shall. Thank you.
Can I, can I just make one comment, Chair?
Please do.
So one thing that I wanted to make sure to note is that the average number of events per personnel per day that that the average can be skewed. For instance, you know, there could be on one, you know, there could be on one day, two responses for one officer, but then there could be 100. It, you know, the responses can ebb and flow. And so looking at staffing, I think looking at staffing, and we did not look at staffing, but just one thing to note is that the, in the two times that I did the sit-along in the, at the comm center with the dispatchers, at one point in time, the dispatcher was, you know, just a mile a minute, super busy. And then the second time I went, it was completely quiet. So it, there's a, you know, in some days, it's really busy and then some days it's really quiet. So I think it's important to kind of consider the ranges when thinking about staffing and responses.
I'd like to comment on a couple of other aspects or other items related to the audit. One is on the subject of mental health calls. We had several of us were speaking this evening about how do you tell the difference between a mental health call and a something else call? And my perspective on that is that that difference is in many cases, a will-o'-the-wisp that you can never catch up with because what is a mental health call and what is not is very much in the mind of the holder. It's not in some objective reality that you can put a stamp on it and say, this is one and that is the other. The second thing I want to comment on is how much our present situation in Berkeley is radically different from what it was in the glory or shame years of the hippies of the 1960s and 1970s. At least according to some of the people who commented at the beginning of our meeting today. Back in the late 1960s and in the 70s, my then-wife, now deceased, was the owner of a large retail store right in the middle of downtown Berkeley's Shattuck Avenue. It was on the east side, right below the offices where KPFA formerly was. Those of you who have been around here a long time will remember that. So, and she and I, of course, talked about things going on at and around her store. And I often hung around the store and sometimes helped out there. I don't recall her ever telling me about problematic people, you know, with or without mental health problems, causing problems for her or her employees. She did have problems in her business, for example, bad checks. But, you know, the customers made or people who didn't, who ran up accounts but didn't pay their bills, but people coming in off the street and making problems at her establishment, no. So there is some concern that some group of people, perhaps a small group of people in Berkeley are making problems for our merchants and maybe other people downtown that didn't used to be the case. I'd like to look into that more.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go next to Mr. Vice Chair Chima.
A couple of things. But I want to ask about deployment because one of the slides showed that for certain incidents, a certain number of officers show up. So some of the incidents that happened over and have been happening over a long period of time is this idea that somehow people who are homeless or are living with a mental illness are dangerous. And so two or three cars will show up. When the sweeps of the encampments were happening over a number of years, it was almost at least one of them, 18 or so cars were deployed to make sure that, I guess, that the sweep was successful. I don't know what the rationale was. So in terms of, if we're going to be looking at all these other pieces, that's the one I'm interested in. As to at what point do large number of cars get deployed and officers get deployed? Of course, in the case of, say, a foreign terror attack or a domestic terror attack or an insurrection on our city hall, it'd be great for me at least to find out exactly what kind of incident then requires either one officer, three or four, or 20. I think I'll keep it at there.
Thank you. One thing I want to point you all to is the appendix. What is this, Appendix G, which is on page 75? This is, this gives you a lot of information by every call type. So this might, you know, not necessarily get at everything you're looking at, but it's a starting point. This provides you, every single call type, it tells you the number of events that are as part of each call type. It provides you with the priorities that are part of that call type. And it also gives you the average personnel per event. So you can get a sense as to the number of staff that are deployed for a particular event type. And, you know, they range from, you know, when you have an audible alarm, it's 1.7 personnel deployed versus when there's a demonstration, there's, you know, 17.7 on average being deployed. So I would just want to point folks to the appendix for more detailed information about each call type that might provide you with some good information.
Thank you. My other question is around, we have a division of mental health in this city. They do have the mobile outreach team. So if there's such a difference in the downtown, and I worked in the downtown in the basement of the Hinks Building for 30, 30, 35 years. And before that, out of the public safety building, the current safety building, before that, it was Mobile Crisis and a couple of other community organizations. Sorry, it's late. Can you tell me where I was going? Thanks. Can anybody help me out?
Yeah, the Division of Mental Health and it's Mobile Crisis.
Thank you. And in the division's budget, it shows 16 or 18 outreach workers. And yet, those of us who are out in the streets haven't seen hardly any of them during COVID. So if there's an increase in mental health calls or calls by restaurants and stuff, what is, the question I'm going to ask is, and this is maybe to the Division of Mental Health, is where are you? And why has this incredible change happened between what Commissioner Opton was saying about the conditions in Berkeley downtown to the conditions now? Or accountability, you know? Where is the accountability from Berkeley Mental Health in terms of both on Mobile Crisis and also on these outreach workers that they're talking about? Most of the outreach right now is being done by community-based organizations. And they're going into tents and having that engagement. But our Mental Health Division might be, but we haven't seen them. So I think that's a big concern and we should take quick action to say, hey, Division of Mental Health, what is your role in this? Why are you not in the downtown and other business areas? We can't just depend on ambassadors, you know, on our streets to do mental health work. So I'm going to put that out and we'll try to get that information from Berkeley Mental Health. But that's a huge concern for many of us. It's like, where is EMH?
Thank you. Commissioner Lutzger.
Yeah, hi. First of all, Jenny, thank you just so, so much for this report. It just represents an enormous amount of work and an enormous contribution to this whole process. I really enjoyed going through it. As someone who likes data, it was certainly just a joy to read through all of what you put together. There have been many comments, as is completely appropriate, by my fellow commissioners about homeless calls for unhoused people and mental health calls. But I do just want to, this is not really a question. This is really just a comment to my fellow commissioners to think about is how large a role traffic is playing in our city police response. It is the number of events that we saw. Traffic stops are far and away the most, the highest number of events that we see, well higher than the second most common, which is disturbing the peace, and two to four times higher than any of the other top 10 events. It's taking up a full quarter of the time of our police, these traffic stops. And it's important, or well, traffic in general, but it's important to remember that these traffic stops are different from many of these other responses that we're talking about, where we're asking, how can we as a city respond differently to these calls for service that we're getting? These traffic stops are, for the vast majority, are not responses to calls for service. These are officer-initiated stops. This is where BPD has huge amount of discretion in just reducing, just stopping. So many of these stops, we know, and I'll get to talk to this a little bit more when we get on to the the Nick Jr. report, but traditional traffic enforcement is not effective in reducing the numbers of people who are killed and severely injured. It just isn't that there is ample data to show it. And these are stops that are unnecessarily tying up city money, police time, when they could be doing other things. It's mostly patrol officers doing these stops, not our traffic bureau. And this is a huge area where we as a commission can make a huge dent with respect to Burke dot where we know what makes our streets safer for people who are suffering from traffic violence. We know how to change street design to do that and enforcement is not the way. And if we are talking here in this commission about reallocating resources away from police and moving them into prevention, services that really work, traffic is a huge area of focus. And I just really want to thank Jenny again for the clear data that show that while we need to think very clearly about our response to mental health calls and our response to unhoused people, we just, this is a big area and Burke dot is a real opportunity area for us to think about how we want to move forward with our police force in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion? Nathan, I think we need a motion to extend the meeting. We're at eight o'clock.
I do not believe we need that for a commission meeting. Mr. Y, give any insight?
I'm not 100% sure, but if you want to make one, that would be great.
I'll make the motion to continue the meeting. This is Commissioner Dangerfield.
I second that.
Thank, thank you. So we'd have to.
The second, sorry, who did the second?
I did.
Make the motion with the time that you want to extend it to, and then you can extend again if needed.
Then I would make a motion to extend the meeting for at least an hour.
Okay, there's a motion to shorten the meeting until 9:08.
I'll second that.
Any seconds, Commissioner Opton. You can call the roll, please.
Commissioner Five?
Yes.
Commissioner Chima, Vice Chair Chima, I'm sorry.
No worries. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dangerfield?
Yes, I think I was the person who made the motion, so.
Yes, I just want to make sure. Thank you. Commissioner Hyde?
I'll say a hesitant yes because I have other duties I need to get to this evening.
So that was a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hager? Yes. Commissioner Lindheim?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Jigu?
Yes.
Commissioner Optin?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake? Absent. Commissioner Polk, absent. Commissioner Malvita?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ho?
Yes, and my apologies, I will be signing up soon, but I'll catch myself up.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutzger?
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Vice Chair Mizel?
Abstain. I'll explain in a minute.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, I apologize, Commissioners. I will review of, you know, Robert's rules and any other rules that govern the commissions. I don't believe we had to make that motion. I know we have a, you know, kind of hopeful stop time, but I think specific rules to govern council, there's a difference, but we'll get to the bottom of that. Moving, I want to move to the public commenters actually and give them opportunity to speak on this item. And we can come back to this.
Okay, I will bring in, give me one second. Find the panelists. All right, I will bring in first Emily Reguso. Emily, you're free to talk.
Thank you, guys, and thank you for the discussion. It was really interesting to read this report and also to hear people's thoughts on it. I agree that this report was really clearly written and easy to follow, so I appreciated that the auditor's team did that. And I also appreciated the questions, the, some of the commissioners asked about these sort of classifications where different call types were chunked together. where different call types were chunked together, and as the auditor said, she has a table going through all those call types and saying kind of how those classifications are made up. I am still hopeful and trying to kind of process, trying to get more clarity on some of this classification situation, because, for example, I'm not sure it was fully vetted by the people who are in law enforcement, and I guess things that maybe stuck out to me were the gunfire calls are in the community category, you know, maybe that are possible gunfire calls. Those are in community, and there's a lot of calls that are in the traffic bucket that actually kind of result in, like, illegal guns being taken off the street. And so I guess I just feel like a lot of things were put in these buckets based on attempts to really understand how other cities do it, and I think it was definitely well-intended, but I do think there are things that kind of inflate, that may inflate the community and traffic categories that, that may more traditionally be considered in the crime buckets, and I think it's hard to see that unless you really, really drill down. And the other, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can all get a better clarity on that. And in addition, sorry, my time is ticking. I did want more clarity at some point about if an officer responded, you know, unable to locate or gone on arrival, so they didn't really stay long. Are all those tallied in the classifications? Because I think those would also kind of skew the calculations, and I'm sure that's an easy answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now bring in Carol Marasovic. Carol, you should be free to speak.
The Commissioner Optin's comments, there would be, if there were better continuity of mental health care, there would be less mental health crisis, and so there are two victims here. And to Commissioner Lindheim's comments, it's going to be very difficult to rely exclusively on dispatcher training when you have to distinguish between the dispatch code and the disposition code, because everything is seen through the caller's eyes. So, and how they convey that to the dispatcher. So it will be interesting to know what other jurisdictions are doing in those cases to the survey. I'm concerned if there's only one category of mental health and/or homeless component, there has to be a checklist with specific categories. I mean, because if you have mental health issues, you're homeless, that is not necessarily a reason to identify someone that they're involved in a crisis. I mean, there can be, as I have earlier mentioned, someone who's homeless or has a mental health issue, and they could be a victim, so you have to have separate categories. The status of a person having mental health issues or being homeless should not be used against them. It should be considered in the context of what the facts are that are going on. I'm going to go back to the dispatcher thing, because I'm thinking of the situation in Alameda with Mario Gonzalez, where it was reported in the media that he, that the caller had stated that he was talking to himself in a park, and that's like clearly a mental health issue, but I'm wondering if something more ominous was reported. Going back to the survey, you need to identify exactly what's transpiring. So it really requires a checklist of the mental health situation, the events that are transpiring, not just as they're a mental health or homeless issue. Thank you. I guess that's all there's time for.
Thank you, Carol. I will now bring in George Lippman. George, you should be free to speak.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Madam City Auditor, for this great report. And I know I owe you something in writing with more of my thoughts, but I'll just put in three points here. One, the audit shows a percentage of events allocated to officer-initiated, calls to 911, or to non-emergency. This, to me, appears to omit a lot of reasons for an interaction, including departmental investigations, detective work, beyond-the-lookout, BOLO, warrant checks, requests from external agencies, et cetera. So that should be looked at to make sure we're, we're taking all the categories into account. Secondly, to this quote about the BPD on average dispatching 1.8 patrol officers per event, this may not take into account self-dispatch. When I was on the PRC, we were told that the reason you often see three or five cars, not three or five officers, is that officers often respond to radio news of an incident. It should be clarified whether that 1.8 officer average includes those who self-dispatch. Then, from the first chart, people also discuss the 22,000 incidents in the five-year study that required 11 or more officers. That is over 12 every day. We have to drill down on this end of, of the, of the range, because it's not enough to say, well, this is how many incidents were divided by this number of officers. I suggest that the task force look into whether these officers are really adding value. Coming 11, you know, every two hours, 11 officers coming to an incident. Or do they amount to overpolicing and also wasted resources? Finally, the third point, Figure 25, Enforcement Actions by Race, may be the most crucial of any chart with regard to racial disparities. The task force should pay special attention to this chart. It indicates that only 23% of stops of African-Americans result in enforcement action, while 42% of stops of white people result in enforcement, a disparity of two to one. This particular metric is the gold standard nationally for analyzing racial disparities in policing. There's more discussion on this point in the 2017 PRC report on the subject, but I would recommend everyone read, and thank you.
Thank you, George. We'll now go to, apologize if I got this name wrong, Uma Channer. Uma, you should be able to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my strong opinion that more police will never make us safe. The only solution to the problem of police violence, racist policing, is the immediate defunding and eventual abolition of BPD. The pigs are not our friends, the pigs are fascist enforcers, and we do not want them in our communities. Yeah, reform is not going to save anyone. Reform is only going to push the problem forward a few years, and we don't have that kind of time. So do everything in your power to disempower the Berkeley police, because they are a blight.
Thank you, Uma. And Chair, there are no more raised hands.
Thank you, Mr. Y. Commissioner Fine?
Yeah, I just, well, first of all, I'm very grateful to our auditor. She's really fundamentally opened the door to thinking about how the police department works in many different ways. And I think one thing that's really apparent is our crisis response system within the police department is fragmented, and it's got a patchwork of ways in which mental health calls may be responded to, and we may not even know whether they are mental health calls based on the way their, the call type is assigned. But in addition, just from working on the Mental Health Commission, the commission, when Boonachima was chair, now has monthly caseload statistics on the Mobile Crisis Team that shows you the number of incidents per month, including the ones that are 5150s. And it also has the data regarding the HOT team and the TOT teams that are the outreach teams to be in downtown Berkeley. So that may be of interest, and it's available in the agenda packets. But one thing that really occurs to me is when we talk about people in crisis downtown, we're talking about mental health, but we are talking about substance use too. And oftentimes, it's hard to distinguish between the two. Because somebody does call mobile, the Mobile Crisis Team does not mean they're necessarily a client of the division, but many clients of the division do have dual diagnosis. And so, you know, what comes to my mind at the end of the day, when we start thinking about the SCU and reimagining safety and different kinds of responses to people in crisis, is what kind of response are we really looking at? Are we looking at a public health, mental health, substance use response? Are we looking at a more punitive criminal response? And I'm not sure I can get that out of the data. So, because if you look at like drug possession or drug delivery or anything having to do with that and substance use, how is that interfacing with the mental health data? So I'm very appreciative, at least now we have data to start looking at, and maybe in this context, we may be able to sift out even more situations that enlighten how we can respond, hopefully, in a public health way to people in crisis. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Hager?
Mine is a comment and not a question. I recall that Auditor Wong had to leave at a certain point, so I'll cede the floor to anybody who has remaining questions.
Mr. Gose? Mr. Gose, do you have a question?
Yeah. Sorry, I also don't have a direct question, but maybe Jenny could still, I would love to hear.
Stay on, yes.
I guess my question is, you know, it seems like a lot of people have already talked about the fuzziness of sort of these categories, and I suspect with traffic and mental health, I anecdotally, and my instinct tells me, there's some fuzziness there as well about who is stopped and how, like, traffic might be used as a way to harass somebody who might just be mentally ill and walking onto the crosswalk, for example. So I don't know how, how much more we need to necessarily dig down. My question for the commission and for staff, and I don't know if you have an opinion, is to try and understand how this correlates to the budget. Like, for me, I'm trying to understand, how did, how does the police department do this work without ever having this information that you've just presented to us today? How are they deciding how much staff they needed, where they were deploying them, whether they were effective or not, you know? If somebody can explain that to me, I would really appreciate how anybody manages an organization without already having an audit like this or some understanding of how they do staffing and therefore budgeting. Because I think for me, I need to make that connection for us to be doing what we said we would do, which is to have better solutions and also to understand how much money is being spent in solutions that haven't been working so far. So, yeah.
Thank you. Well, I believe that's all the questions commissioners have at this moment. To other one, thank you very much for this comprehensive report, and thank you to your team for all the work you and your team have put in. I know when I reviewed earlier, I think it's last week, earlier this week, I was impressed, I was like, you know, first like the data, then like Easter Mord, and then look at the appendix, I'm like, oh, all the details are there. And I know this task force will be looking for it, really digging into it more, and seeing what conclusions we can possibly come to, so thank you for being here.
Chair Mizell, do you mind if I just take a little bit of time? I wanted to clarify a couple of things that were brought up. I thought it might be helpful for this group, based on some of the comments.
Yes.
Can I just take, like, maybe one or two minutes? So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that our classifications, that where we lay out the various type of classifications, it's just a way to categorize and chunk information. And we did, you know, consider a variety of factors. But, you know, I want to recognize that there's no perfect approach for categorizing the various call types. We did consult with subject matter experts, but we also worked with the police department's data manager, the police liaison, patrol officers, and the police chief, and, you know, worked with them on these classifications. We also transparently laid this out in our appendix with regards to what each classification, the call types that are part of each classification. And we also do not make any recommendations associated with the classification, so we try to lay all this out very transparently for folks. And then there was a question about the data with regards to whether we include, if it's gone-on arrival, what we include in our dataset. As long as the event includes a dispatch for police personnel, so we include that call. So we include data for all calls that include the police, and including those that were missing the timestamp when the officer arrives on the scene. And, and finally, I, you know, I think that looking, you know, what Commissioner Gosch said about correlating this with the budget is an excellent idea, and look forward to hearing more from this group on all of these issues. So thank you so much for having me and my team, and look forward to, you know, continuing the conversation. I also want to just invite anybody that wants to connect with me after this meeting. I'd be happy to talk further with you about the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we'll move to our next item, and we do have one after this, but I.
Chair Mizell, is it possible for me to make my comment before we move to the next agenda item?
Yes, my apologies.
Absolutely no problem. I just want to once again highlight this stop data. I believe it was Commissioner Lutzger who brought it up, and then also a caller, Lippman. The stop data is really, really concerning to me. I think it lays bare the racial disparities in this city. And to somebody who called in public comment earlier, they said they don't want this group beholden to a national narrative. I think that this data makes it very clear that this national narrative, the city is not immune to the national narrative of racial disparities in policing. So it's not that we, as a group, are following, following national trends that are not reflected in our city, you know, like this racial disparity, this racism in policing. It's in every police department and is very present in our police department, and we now have both anecdotal experiences of black residents and hard data from the city to back that up, and I think it's very important to hammer in that point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, so moving now to our, the Calls for Service Analysis Framework from Nick Jr.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. So, given the hour, I am going to suggest we move very fast. This presentation we were asked to do by the City Manager's Office is really about a suggestion on how we think about the framework of these calls for service analyses. The National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform has conducted a number of these calls for service analyses. We are also going to work with the City Auditor's Office to conduct a step two, if you will, of this analysis. Some of that will be a financial analysis. Some of that will be hearing the really good points that were made tonight. I just want to say that the task force and public, members of the public who made comments and questions, I think, made some excellent points and questions in terms of, one, pointing out the great job the auditor did, as well as looking to wishing there were more in the data. A lot of that was how the data is not the work of the auditor. So I'm going to quickly go through this framework, and let me just give some more context. This was a presentation, this is a presentation on our suggested way to think about the data. And we actually did this initially thinking about any city who's thinking about reimagining public safety, specifically around the police department. So assuming I can share a screen, yes. Is how you, how do you want to come at an issue like this? I also want to say our kind of expert calls-for-service data analyst, Amir Chappell, who's on with us, can answer questions. He has conducted numerous assessments for calls for service. numerous assessments for calls for service in several cities. The National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform, we have conducted analysis, some in Berkeley, we're continuing to do that. You'll see one slide of that analysis. We've conducted analyses in Fresno, Oakland, as well as Seattle. We're conducting a pretty detailed analysis and Seattle's, we've just finished that. And so this, I know there was some questions of comparing cities. We can talk briefly about that. So just a bit of information, the good thing is the auditor went over this well, you know, analysis of the CAD data, the computer assisted data specific by categories. There was a lot of discussion around categories. So this issue of incident type, time of dispatch, time of arrival, time of call closure, you heard this issue of disposition, because sometimes calls change, and they change both ways. So for instance, in Oakland, I'm not quite sure I can make this generalization about Berkeley. Very clear, I can make the generalization about Oakland is sometimes people want a quicker police response, so they exaggerate the call when they call 911. What happens often is they come home to a burglarized home, and then they'll say, somebody is in my home, because that triggers the difference in the time response, right? And so then when police arrive and interview the person, then they realize it's, you know, the home invasion is down to Berkeley. That's one example. There's other examples in terms of guns. Somebody, I remember something told me specifically when we were doing our work that I called the police and said, I think somebody's in my house with a gun. He said he didn't want to lie directly. So he said, I think, and he got the response time he wanted, when it turned out he had come home after all day at work and saw his home was burglarized, having no idea when it was. So that's just an example of calls can change. And so the disposition, and I think you heard, sorry, I'm blanking on, you heard the representative from the police department talk about this, that calls can change. So looking at the disposition is is necessary in the number of officers. But in addition to CAD, there's also the records management system. And the records management system is a bit more detailed. And when you can cross-reference the CAD data with the records management system data, that's when you can get a fuller information. It's my understanding, I talked to the auditor today, and I should have should have double-checked this, but it's my understanding that there was not access to the records management system, similar to we have CAD data and not access to the records management system. Speaking of category, NICJR, we have developed prior to our engagement with Berkeley, we developed a categorization type. And and part of that was specifically what was asked about earlier, which was we would use the same categories for every city we work with. Part of the reason of that is so that we can compare. But part of the reason of that is we think that this breakdown is somewhat simple. And a big piece of that is because of the recommendations we will make, right? So you heard the auditor say this is just an assessment. They're not recommending, because we're making recommendations, we had this breakdown type. But as the auditor said, you know, no one is right, no one is wrong. You can slice this a few different ways. And then assessment of time spent on calls within each offense type, right? And the part of what we want to do next is do an assessment on how much time, and therefore how much resources are spent, budget time is spent on certain call categorizations. All right, so this is the one slide that is preliminary. We're doing a more detailed analysis, or we're trying to see what can we be helpful with? We don't want to replicate anything, the great report from the auditor's office. We want to be additive. And so we're also going to going to do two things. We're going to work with the auditor's office as well as get your input in terms of what folks would like to see in a further analysis. This is an example. This is an actual analysis that NICJR did of the five years of data. And you see that a large, similar to what the auditor found, or saying, rather, it's just in our categories. So it shows up slightly different. But a large number of calls are for noncriminal. These are things like noise, someone screaming in the street, so they called the police, right? That's not a crime necessarily. Or someone, there's an abandoned car. One of the larger ones are traffic stops, which are fractions, sometimes at best in fractions, not crime, sometimes not even fractions. And, you know, we heard noted earlier, the amount of time spent, some, I think, one of the commissioners talked about one of the times spent on traffic stops. So the top three calls for service for noncriminal are disturbance, traffic, and alarm. Alarm is an issue everywhere. And when you have this issue of an alarm, the vast majority of that time, it's actually not a crime, right? There's some reason alarm went off, and it wasn't stopped in time, and therefore, a officer was dispatched. You'll see that the pretty low amount for felony and serious violent felony, what we have used is the California Penal Code in order to determine these categorizations. And so again, it's similar, but just slightly different categorization from the auditor. So you're going to get a lot more of this in the next agenda item, but just for now, examples of recommendations of alternative responses, right? And so we're going to talk about this a little bit more detail, but we're going to try to be quick, is there are other cities like Berkeley who's developing SCU, but there's other cities over there, right? Obviously, Kahoots is the main one that's talked about around the country. But there's some pretty impressive alternative response programs in Olympia, Denver, San Francisco recently started one. And obviously, as we know, Berkeley is working on the SCU. So this is kind of our recommendation to communities that the community, the city determine what they want police officers to respond to, focus on, kind of step back and to make that decision kind of generally, right? Because you can have skewed when you're looking at specific data, and it's hard to change what is, right? And so if you step back and say, what do we want our police officers to do? And then to conduct the cost of service analysis, as has been done, to look at the workload, and then to think about a base, based on the above assessment, create a targeted staffing and budget reduction for the PD, if a reduction is necessary based upon what you want, right? And and sometimes this is called a zero-based budgeting approach. When you think about, let's start from zero, let's see what we need, and then that could see how much money does that require? As an example, about 60% of the Berkeley Police Department is on operations, 59%, which is mostly patrol, right? So it's the patrol division that is responding to calls for service. And then if the result of that assessment is a reduction, to create some type of reduction plan, right? Here, we're saying this might be the elimination of vacant positions, the attrition, that doesn't include layoffs, right? So for example, in the past five years, the Berkeley Police Department has had, you know, approximately 17 officer attrition rate per year, right? And if you do the math, so for instance, in Oakland, we haven't done, we haven't have all the information to be able to do this analysis, but in Oakland, an officer is about $240,000 per year, one officer. Salary benefits, equipment, all of that, right? And so you can begin to start to do these type of calculations. Then to reinvest, right? And here, we suggest you think about two different types of reinvestments. One is if you no long, if you take away a duties, right? Because part of what the police departments are saying around the country, which I don't think is false, is saying to do what we're currently doing, we actually need more resources, not less. And I would say, as stated, that's not a false statement. The issue is there are communities saying, we actually think the police shouldn't do as much. The irony is, that seems to align, let me say directly my experience, that aligns with 100% of the police officers I've asked about this. And I've asked a lot around the country, that they don't think is a great op-ed written by a Chicago police officer about how he spent whole shifts responding to things he doesn't think a police officer should respond to, in a city that has a huge violence problem, that that's where the time and effort should be spent. But that being said, when someone calls 911, they want and expect a response. They don't necessarily need a armed sworn officer response, but they want some sort of response. And so, again, the this is, we made this generally, so what we call a CERN, Community Engagement, I'm sorry, Community Emergency Response Network. Obviously, Berkeley is specifically working on a special care unit. And then in addition to that, so that you have some response to a call, although, as we know, there's some calls that don't deserve a response. And there is this issue of people have called for things that are, you know, there's different reports, but for instance, the man who was killed in Alameda, my understanding, although I think there's different reports, the initial 911 call was, he doesn't have a mask on outside in the park. He was by himself and no one was around, right? Do you need a police officer or police officers to respond to that call? Do you need anybody to respond to that call? Right? And so, but second is root cause issues that will ultimately reduce in the need for emergency response, housing, employment, mental health, and just understanding those are two different things. Some is creating a robust, trained, deployable, community response to to calls for service. Another is investing in community and resources, so you reduce even that need. And then an annual assessment, housing, what are crime rates like? What are the response times? What are the amounts of services provided? Just one last example I give on this. We've heard this in other cities where we have, for instance, a large call volume for cars parked, blocking my driveway. I can't get out, and I need the car moved. And so it was, I think in Oakland or Fresno, I've done this a few places where they were that tow truck company who did that work only would respond if the police sent them. And so, and because the police are working on other issues, it took several hours for that, and individuals being frustrated by the slow response. But even when that response come, it's still taking a significant amount of time of that officer on towing a car that's blocking the driveway, right? So if you can have an alternative response, not only would it not take the time and include an officer, but it would also be faster and potentially more effective. And the other thing I'll just say on this is, there are, we know so many of these incidents around the country that have become, we've known these national tragedies of people dying at the hands of officers have come responding to pretty low level incidents. We have this recent horrible example in Alameda, in Vallejo, some, you know, somebody stopped because they didn't have a light on their bicycle, right? Which led to the killing of that person in Vallejo and numerous other examples that we've collected and shared. We know these stories, but to see the long list of them is challenging. So what we have suggested is a tiered dispatch response. And a part of a community's responses is what do we want in each tier? We have recommendations. But in fact, the second report that we're going to provide to this task force is recommendations specifically about this, specific call types in Berkeley. But where you have a tier one, that we're just the trained community group for, you know, like an SCU is dispatched, generally noncriminal or low-level calls. Two, where the CERN, again, this is the Community Emergency Response Network, this is just the words that we use, are the lead, but there is the call is a little higher in issue where you want the police to be able to either be present or be near if they need to respond. And then tier three flipped the order where the police take the lead, but if they see like in Denver, this happens pretty well, where the police respond to a scene, realize, well, we don't need to be here, we can call in the, I think it's called STAR in Denver. And then four, when the call is clearly serious or violent, where officers would be dispatched. So this is just our recommendation in terms of the tiered dispatch. And lastly, I saw this cartoon somewhere, I've got to figure out where, so we give the right credit other than just in. But I really felt like this really spoke to what we're talking about, that I happen to think there is agreement that there's many police officers who believe that they're asked to do too much with too little, and asked to do things that they're not trained to do. And that's true, right? So we should take that responsibility away from that. I think I heard it was either a caller or a task force commissioner say this earlier, is we genuinely believe we should reduce the duties of police officers to that which we really need them for. And this was a great cartoon that displayed that. So I'll stop there, see if there's any questions about this. But really, we were just asked to give this as a framework to think about the calls for service analysis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Robbin. And yeah, commissioners, so free, probably if you can keep it on the paper. Okay, well, yeah, not any questions. Mr. White, can you turn it to a public comment then?
Just one second, I'm having a little bit of computer problems.
I'll do it.
Thank you. My internet is not working.
No worries. So I'm going to turn it over to Avi Simon. Avi, you should be able to speak.
Hi, hi, am I being heard?
Yes.
Great, yeah. Thanks to all the members of the task force for being here tonight, sorry about that. And and the work you're doing to potentially transform our police department. I really just wanted to emphasize my perspective, and I think the perspective of a lot of folks in our community, which is that this police department does not make us safe. They produce racist outcomes. Ms. Hager on the task force, I think, spoke well to this, that they produce a disgusting amount of racism in terms of their police stops, traffic stops, which are frowned upon nationwide as a source of bias and racist policing. And they also are a completely untransparent and unaccountable institution who takes home a ridiculous amount of this city's budget, over 40% of this city's budget, I believe. And it really just, it makes no sense to me that teachers in the city of Berkeley, at least according to the most recent pay scale, top out at 102K a year, that's the top salary they can take home, when police officers, the top paid police officers in this city take home sometimes $100,000 more than that salary. I know Officer McGee here takes home, according to Transparent California, over $25,000 more than that salary. So I think it's time for this city to allocate its funds towards the lives and livelihoods of its citizens and stop funding a racist, violent institution. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm turning it. Next public comment is Carol Marasovich.
I noticed his meeting in between 6:00 and 9:00 PM. So I didn't know why you were taking a vote at 8:00 to continue. But I do agree with the tier situation. There are some situations that clearly there can be a response by by an SCU that law enforcement are not needed. And but there is another tier that should be put in there, which is there are situations where I believe the police and the layperson team can go out in tandem together. I see that as appropriate, for example, with a domestic violence situation, where you actually might, you need, there is violence, so you need the police there in that event. But on the other hand, the persons that are ununiformed, without weapons, might be able to be involved in much better with the de-escalation. And so I think you should consider that. In Kahoots in Oregon, the model, I think it's something like 15% of the time or 16% of the time only, they had to call the police for backup. So I need, I think you need that, but let us not presume that there always has to be backup. And in the same sense, I believe that there should be situations where the police call them for backup, because their skills might be needed, which were not known at the time of dispatch. And that's why there is a significant amount of money that has to be put into the specialized care unit to do it properly on a 24/7 basis. to do it properly on a twenty-four seven basis to cover the calls that need to be addressed in the city. Also, all the police really should be CIT, uh, trained and they should be trained in the full forty hour model. Uh, because there are situations where they may go out to respond to a crime and they are going to find somebody who has a mental health issue, who is autistic, uh, who has certain, uh, types of issues that they should be prepared to handle in the event that the S U is not possi- uh, possible there to call out for backup. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
And there, uh, there are no more raised hands, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. White. Um, okay, yeah. Um, thank you, Robbin. I think we'll, we'll move straight into, uh, new and emerging models of community safety.
Perfect. Um, thank you. So, uh, and again, uh-oh, oh, yeah. Again, we will, um, uh, attempt to go, so let me context, uh, the task force has had this for a few days. I mean, I know it's a, it's a longer report. Um, not going to go over all of it. Uh, of course, it's, it's nearly fifty pages with the, with the, um, references. But, um, we, as a part of our agreement with the city, this is our first kind of major deliverable uh, to conduct, uh, this study of new and emerging models of community safety and policing. Uh, many of the programs that we looked at, uh, are very new and emerging, uh, around the policing. Some aren't as new. Uh, but some are as well. Uh, this really, uh, we suggest to be a living document, uh, because, uh, especially as some of them are so new. San Francisco's, for instance, program, um, uh, launched very recently. Uh, they were still learning, uh, about, uh, some of their, not only programmatic aspects, but certainly outcomes. Um, and so, uh, and then obviously this is still a draft to, uh, receive task force member, uh, feedback. Um, and so I'm going to, uh, share, um, uh, the, uh, report. Um, and just, I'm going to try to go through this somewhat quickly. Uh, I know folks have had an opportunity to review it. Um, I want to point out some of, uh, the, uh, initiatives that, uh, we highlighted in this report. Uh, I will say to the point of new and emerging, we had finished this report at one point. Um, and shared it with our team of, of advisors that we have on this. As folks know, it's National Super Criminal Justice Reform is kind of leading and coordinating, but we have several other, uh, team members. Uh, one, uh, in particular being from Yale University who's specifically working on these issues. So they provided a lot of feedback, uh, and added, uh, some pieces to this. So it's a, it's really a living. Uh, we're going to suggest it's become a living document. Uh, and the idea is to initially provide this information as ideas, as examples of what the Berkeley could do. Um, and our next deliverable is more specific recommendations. Uh, our second deliverable to this task force is going to be examining the calls for service in, uh, Berkeley and suggesting per call type, which of the calls can be, um, responded to by an alternative response. For instance, it's our understanding that the work of the S U is to create that S U, but not necessarily recommend how that affects the, uh, police department's functions. Uh, and that's something we're specifically going to do, uh, and bring back, uh, to this task force to get your feedback and, 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 and response and suggestions as well. So, um, it has, uh, a number of sections. First are, uh, these kind of emerging and non-enforcement models of community response. Obviously, um, so a couple of things here. This was, um, uh, for me personally, some of the most interesting pieces. Some of it is so new and unique. That being said, of course, this really is the work that the S U is doing, uh, but we wanted to include these i- in our report. And then we tried to look at other, uh, programs around the country that are non-enforcement, uh, reductions and other types of crimes. Uh, uh, other than responding, uh, to low level or and or mental health challenges uh, and not including, uh, uh, violence or gun violence, rather. Uh, and there wasn't a lot there. It was difficult. Um, um, and then we have a section on, in this section around gun violence was specifically added because of the city councils. Um, and I, if I remember correctly, Councilman Bartlett, who specifically requested a, a look at, uh, gun violence strategies to be added, uh, to this. Uh, and Berkeley does not have a high rate of, of gun violence. Uh, but we know we have had some very challenging issues and like many cities around the country during COVID, there has been an increase. Uh, and then there was a look at the policing strategy. So those are the five sections. In regard, uh, to, um, non-enforcement models, you know, response, obviously what we hear about a lot is cahoots, A, because it has been around for a while. Um, it has, uh, been pretty significantly successful in, uh, significantly reducing the number of calls that the, uh, police department, uh, has to respond to in Eugene, Oregon. Um, and as was noted earlier, very few of those calls, uh, result in having to call in the police department. Um, and which has resulted in a significant amount of savings, uh, for the city uh, because of reduced need for police to, uh, respond to those calls. Uh, kind of following, uh, cahoots Oakland, uh, has, uh, recently started a process to implement macro. Uh, it's been a process that has had some painful challenges, uh, but they have recently decided to have the fire department uh, run the program, um, and they are, uh, going to launch, uh, sometime very soon. They have decided, uh, to not have a focus on mental health, uh, cases, uh, specifically, uh, but general disturbance cases, um, which happened to be a large number of calls for service. Um, and so, uh, then other cities have more recently or, uh, within the last few years have started actually their alternative response, uh, Denver's STAR Support Team Assisted Response, uh, seems very, uh, good. Uh, this is the one I mentioned where they have, uh, have this, uh, practice where, um, the police department sometimes responds to a call and determines, we're actually not needed. We're going to call in STAR. Uh, some of these like STAR are not yet twenty-four hour. It's something they're trying to build up to. Uh, similar in Olympia in Washington, the Crisis Response Unit. Uh, many of these are similar. They have nuanced differences. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on them. You have your, uh, uh, that you have this report. The San Francisco, uh, Street Crisis Response Team, uh, this is very interesting because it's, it's pairing, um, uh, the Behavioral Health Crisis Unit, a, uh, kind of a peer mediator, someone who has lived experiences. Sometimes we call that credible messengers, uh, as well as an E M T. Uh, and it, it sits, uh, in Health Right Three Sixty, which is, you know, very well-known statewide, uh, service organization. Uh, and again, this recently started, so we're going to really be interested in seeing how, uh, how this, uh, how this goes. And, uh, in Austin, they've also recently started this M COT, this Expanded Mobile Crisis Outreach Team, uh, to again, the, have a bit more focus on mental health calls. Uh, but like many of these other ones, they're still not twenty-four hours. It's something they want to expand to, uh, soon. Um, and, uh, in Houston, there is a crisis. Might need to mute their call, crisis call, uh, diversion. Uh, and again, it's, and, and a, a lot of the interest in some of this is in terms of the call center. How do these calls get routed? You know, obviously you all have talked about this already. Uh, there is this effort in Berkeley in terms of the fire department looking at just the dispatch system. Um, so for instance, Oakland's Reimagining Public Safety Task Force specifically recommended that the call center be taken out of the police department and place in the fire department. Um, the, you know, a lot, something that got a lot of attention was this if the Department of Community Solutions to Public Safety proposal. Uh, it's not happened yet, but they're proposing to abolish the police department, create, uh, this Department of Community Solutions and Public Safety. It will have an enforcement arm. Uh, what they're proposing, you know, they haven't, they haven't landed on this yet, so not sure that this is going to happen. But what they're proposing is those officers would have to reapply, uh, for their jobs. Uh, but this is an attempt to have a larger department that would have a civilian response, a community response section, would have an enforcement section and would have other pieces of a larger public safety department. Um, and, uh, our tier dispatch, I'll, we already went over this, so I don't need to go over that. Um, a few of the non-law enforcement, other crime categories, New York's MAP, Mayor's Action Plan. In short, this is an interesting strategy where they've looked at public housing specifically, but it could work for any type of neighborhoods where, uh, the mayor's office has come in and say, let's try to solve some problems together with the neighborhood, with, uh, residents. Um, and they have something called Neighborhood Stat, which is a very detailed kind of data collection and data-driven performance management process where they're trying to, uh, solve problems that does not include enforcement. Um, and it has, this has had some significant success, uh, in the neighborhoods that they have rolled, uh, this hour in. Um, there is also, uh, domestic violence, which is just very complicated and difficult, uh, because of some incidents in the history, both in the country, but all, all in California, where there has not been a particular response, uh, to certain levels of domestic violence that later escalated to serious harm or death. Uh, you have this law in California which says there's mandatory arrests for many domestic violence calls. I've been on, uh, 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 ride-alongs with police officers in other jurisdictions on some of these type of cases that seemed really challenging and difficult where the officer was saying, it's clear to me, I don't think an arrest is needed, but because of the way this has been described, I've got to make this arrest. Um, where ev- no party involved thought an arrest was necessary. Um, but because there have been incidents where they come, seems like everything's fine and there's an escalation. This is a difficult issue. But there's a lot of research that says that victims of domestic violence, uh, don't feel like law enforcement and, and criminal justice even involvement. Um, the courts and everything else has, was, uh, fulfilling in terms of, of what should have happened. Um, and so there has been, in fact, the Center for Disease Control, uh, has, uh, these programs, Stop Sexual Violence, Partner Violence, uh, when implemented have been, uh, that, that, you know, promoting social norms, protecting violence, teaching skills that have been effective. Uh, there's the commercial, sexual exploitation. Obviously there's been a lot of work in the, the Bay Area has led the country in trying to decriminalize, uh, uh, this as well as especially helping, uh, to, uh, rescue children from sexual and commercial exploitation, uh, but certainly not criminalizing, uh, uh, this work. And so, uh, there's a lot of, uh, effective work here. Obviously here in the Bay Area, Missy and others have been at the forefront uh, of this, uh, incredible work. We've talked about traffic enforcement. There's some really good, uh, studies, uh, including in Berkeley that shows a lot of time and effort, uh, by police around traffic enforcement. Some of the interesting, uh, we, you know, here's the data that the auditor also referenced, uh, from, uh, the study uh, that was done, uh, in terms of, of stops, uh, in Berkeley. And, uh, there, there's a whole Burke dot process that's happening, uh, separately from this, but connected. Uh, but the, the piece I want to say here is there has been, uh, these efforts in other jurisdictions to eliminate, uh, pretext stops. You know, pretext stops are officers, uh, have some reason or think that they need to stop this person and maybe want to search them or maybe something deeper going on and they stop them on the basis of a broken tail light or a license plate light out or something relatively minor in order to try to see what's going on. Uh, and some, you know, pretext stops have led to some very difficult, uh, uh, outcomes. The pretext stops are often racially, um, uh, very disproportionate for people of color. Uh, and so, uh, neighbor disputes, there is some good work around the country in Baltimore. It is a good study in terms of, uh, when neighbor disputes are responded to by community mediators rather than police having much better outcomes. Uh, again, I'm going to go on the, the violence reduction strategies. Um, I can spend so, several hours. This is some of the work we do. Uh, I'll just briefly say there are, there are four strategies that are particularly effective around the country. Uh, what, what, what we like to call group violence, uh, reduction or gun violence reduction strategy, uh, is, you know, something that Oakland has done with significant success prior to COVID. Uh, but you know, it's kind of started in Boston. Um, and several cities have used this model around the country, uh, with success. Uh, and then second, uh, being, uh, Advanced Peace, right here in nearby Richmond. There's been a lot of attention to the Advanced Peace, uh, program. Uh, oh, sorry. Second is hospital-based violence intervention programs. Uh, when you respond to the hospitals, when someone is shot to stop, uh, from, uh, trying to stop retaliation. In fact, also right here in the Bay Area, Oakland with Youth Alive, this was created now. There's, there's, there's nearly a hundred programs around the country that have hospital-based violence intervention programs. And then, uh, as I said, Office of Neighborhood Safety in Richmond, Advanced Peace grew out of that effort in Richmond. Um, and where it's a real focus on the shooters to connect them to where someone with similar lived experiences, a credible messenger, provide them financial incentives. Uh, there's also what's called transformative travel. They take these young men uh, on international trips, also national trips. Uh, the, the outcome has been extraordinary, seventy-three percent reduction in homicides in Richmond after the implementations program, and they have maintained that over several years. There's been two shootings and I think two homicides in Richmond this year, uh, at a time where, you know, several other cities are really struggling. Uh, and then fourth, street outreach, uh, which is one of the main, you know, known, uh, violence reduction strategies. Uh, the research here is a little mixed, right? The research basically says if you focus on the right people, street outreach can be effective, but if you're just canvassing neighborhoods, generally it won't be effective. Uh, but we have examples of, of pretty, uh, effective organizations doing this. All right. Last piece is on policing strategies. I'm going to really race through this. SAR model is an older model, you know, kind of developed in eighty-seven, has done a difference, uh, it's, you know, scanning, analysis, response and assessment. It really is a problem solving, the idea of let's try to solve a problem, not just come with enforcement. Uh, where police look at a problem, figure out how can we solve it? Uh, work with community members rather than just coming with, uh, uh, enforcement strategy. Um, ethical policing is courageous. Epic, uh, is, is, is relatively new. You know, even though it goes to two thousand and six in New Orleans, it's really this issue of trying to train officers to intervene if they see fellow officers doing wrong. This is a big issue in policing and, and the, you know, what people call the blue wall of silence. Um, and so the, uh, Epic, and then, um, uh, Georgetown University took this and expanded it to something called ABLE, Active Bystander for Law Enforcement, again, training law officers to step in, uh, to intervene if they see fellow officers doing wrong. Um, Community Safety Partnership in Watts, there could be a whole presentation about this extraordinary, uh, 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 success in, uh, community police partnerships in Watts around community improvement and violence reduction. It really led to the police department in Los Angeles this year, or in, within the last year, creating a whole new division of community partnership, uh, with the deputy chief, uh, overseeing that division. And that deputy chief was the sergeant who ran the Watts program, uh, years ago. Um, and focused deterrence, which is somewhat connected to group violence production, but focused deterrence, which has been done very poorly in many cities. I've got to say, this can be done really poor. When it's done right, it can be effective. When it's focused on reducing the footprint of law enforcement, focusing on the extraordinarily small number of people who are involved in gun violence and, and focus in a way that offers support and services and enforcement as a last, uh, effort. Um, eliminating pre-sexual stops. I, I've talked about that already. Um, and so I, I will, oh, the, that last, the last few pieces are there, some new efforts, some of them are as old as seventy-two in St. Louis. Uh, but in Chicago, new to create alternatives to the unions. Um, and as, as we've heard around the country, there's been difficult challenges with unions that have, um, not supported reform. Even when you have officers supporting reform, sometimes the union doesn't. Um, and there has been, especially if you're talking about, uh, officers of color. And so you have in St. Louis and Chicago, these examples of these alternative police associations other than their formal union. Uh, so I will, oh, no, I won't stop there. Two pieces, diversity. This is talked about a lot. Sometimes this is dismissed as it doesn't matter. There's a really good few series of studies out now that say it does matter. Uh, that black officers, Latino officers, officers of color and women, um, have used much less force uh, and pull people over of color much less often. Uh, some really good studies, uh, that show police diversity matters. Uh, the other piece, which is the whole culture of policing is warrior versus guardian mentality. Uh, when you come into the police department as thinking you're a warrior, going to knock heads. I've heard officers all across this country use that term. We're going to knock heads. We're going to get the bad people. When it's this really warrior. When it's this really warrior mentality versus a guardian mentality. And some really good reports on this, talking about the academy. I had the opportunity to spend some time in Chicago Police Academy a few years ago. It was frightening to hear the screaming, yelling, that the type, the yelling, the screaming, the militarization that happens in the academies. You know, one thing I'll just say, we're going to have recommendations in another report. You know, we really recommend, should, Berkeley is small, so it's really difficult to have its own academy. But should Berkeley lead a progressive academy, right? Should Berkeley mostly uses the Alameda County Sheriff's Department academy? I think we know that there's some significant challenges with the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. So should Berkeley have a progressive academy that it can start making money by? Because that's what happened, Berkeley has to pay the sheriff's department to go through your academy. That it can be a progressive academy developed. It's small, but it could hopefully be mighty. That's one just recommendation that'll be coming later. So, and then police training, I won't go over this, it's in the report. There's some really good trainings, training by itself is not effective. It has to be followed up by accountability and strong policies. And the last thing I'll just say is, you know, there's some good examples of data-driven risk management, where you're really being transparent with the data. And you're showing, looking at issues of complaints, uses of force, disciplines. You know, there's no reason that a officer, shavin, who had, I think, 17 previous complaints, three previous uses of force, a shooting, several uses of force, previous shootings, should have been not just an officer, but a training officer in a department that had been considered reform-minded, right? So having much better understanding of, you know, people call them early on, intervention systems, but having a good one that's also transparent. So I'll stop there. And that was longer than I hoped, my apologies. But there's a lot in this report, and we look forward to even getting suggestions on other areas that we can include. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. And I'd just say, you know, your work and your team's work on this report seems very impressive. I know when I first looked over, I was like, I'm happy, you know, because there's a lot to go through, and especially more than I can even mention to this meeting. But it's comprehensive, and I know, I really appreciate that, and I'm sure other committees do as well.
And Chair Mizel, on that point, I failed miserably at the beginning. Let me apologize to my team member and to everyone. Nahali Mishwanath, who really led this effort, so I'm the spokesperson here. So let me, let me apologize, I meant to say that in the beginning. Nahali really led this effort. You know, I may have edited a word or two, but I just want to thank my team member, Nahali, who led this effort, who now will mostly answer questions around the depth, the details of this, so.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Malvito.
Thank you so much, Nahali, for the report, and David Mohammed for the presentation. It was great. I mean, you're right, it is so much to go through. It's, gives me some hope that there are not only many programs, but many successful programs with a long runway of, you know, success and changes and, you know, impact. I guess I had two questions, one of them might be easily answered, and the other, actually, most easily answered. The first one is, in any of this, when you were looking through, you know, changing really the dynamic and reimagining public safety, in any of this, did you find any successful models for surveillance cameras, or ShotSpotter's that are compelling enough to be included in this report? Yeah, now, I can let you answer that first question before I go on.
Great question. So we did look at some analyses of ShotSpotter and found that sometimes post-implementation, it leads to overpolicing in certain areas. So that was a reason we didn't personally include ShotSpotter in this, just because we didn't want to increase that burden on the Berkeley Police Department and the community as well.
Yeah, no, thank you, Nahali. Two things. One, I want to say ShotSpotter is very expensive. And, you know, there's cities like Oakland that like it because, you know, they don't, they don't, they don't always get 911 calls around shootings, which is concerning on another level. But it is very expensive, and like the hottest points, it sometimes results in overpolicing. So there's, it's pro and con. The other piece, though, we did include is the traffic piece. And this is, this is also, you know, not easy, right? That this discussion of do we replace officers as it relates to traffic with technology, right? And there is some concern around technology, right? I used to live in Washington DC, where there's several speed trap cameras that I hate. But, you know, if, in this instance, it's not replacing, they didn't reduce traffic police at all, they just added, right? But if it is reducing of traffic officers, then you do have that struggle about which is, you know, which is better.
Thank you so much. That sort of aligns with what my thoughts were about surveillance and ShotSpotter as well. I know that you mentioned, you know, trap technology and traffic stops, and really just reducing police presence, and automated license plate readers, I think, are a technology that's being used, and I think you just talked about that. That's great. Thank you so much for answering that question. The second question I had was, in the fourth section, the community-driven police violence reduction strategy. Was there any, and maybe I may have missed this, but was there anything? And I mean, the way we look at this is that there is no one solution, right? It's all sort of a multi-pronged thing, that it's like a campaign, really, of multiple things. But in your research, did you find anything that has to do with any, with gun buyback programs in the community, and whether or not those have been proven to be successful?
Yeah, I'll start off with, this is, you know, this is the one section I did contribute a lot to. But the gun buyback programs have consistent evaluations about being effective at the goal of reducing gun violence, right? And so I'm a big proponent of actions should be aligned with desired outcomes. That seems obvious, but it's not done a lot. And I tell people, I'm not saying don't do gun buybacks. Don't do them if your specific goal is to reduce gun violence. If you want to take guns off the street, off the community, that's fine, right? Do it. But consistent evaluations have shown it does not reduce gun violence.
The evaluations also show that, you know, there's just such a small percentage of guns that are actually received, that the programs end up being, you know, popular but ineffective a lot of the time.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Haide.
It's agreed, this is just a really thick and meaty report. And so I'm really grateful, because I've been wanting to hear a lot of the structure and comparative analysis with cities across the country who are working on this important stuff. This might be in your next report to come, and so just tell me if I'm ahead of ourselves. But is there, my question is, is BPD bound by, at either the city level or the state level, an officer's bill of rights? And then along with that, are there, are there solutions that are working? Or are there any hurdles that we really need to start deeply considering with regard to labor unions?
So unions? I was just going to say, unions will be specifically definitely covered in our next report. Any mechanisms regarding police accountability and transparency is for the next one. Go ahead, David.
Yep, no, that's, that's right. So we are looking at that, there is, you know, I'm just giving an example that's not Berkeley, but we did this in Oakland. We discovered, I think I mentioned this in a previous task force meeting, that the police union there had a, have an MOU that says you cannot lay off a police officer. Right? There's a separate fund that Oakland has that says you can't collect that tax for that fund if you have less than 680 police officers, right? And so we are going to look for those types of things, like what are those type of prohibited factors? Obviously, there's the state bill of rights. And we almost added, again, this is an example of something we like, are going to finalize this report. Did we add this? But I'm just blank on the state that repealed its bill of rights for its police officer bill of rights.
And is qualified immunity going to be in that set of this next report, kind of going in depth on that?
Yes, exactly.
Great, looking forward to it. Thanks a lot, guys.
Of course.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutzker.
Hi there. Thank you so much for this report. I really learned a lot looking through it. I have two kind of sets of questions, so I'm wondering, the first one, if we can talk about the first one first, which is just, this was all really interesting to read, and what's best practices? I guess I felt like I came up short in understanding what, how this relates to what we're currently doing in the city of Berkeley. You know, how many of these best practices are we, in fact, already employing? I know there's a whole section on training. I found it, you know, I would like to know what training are we doing right now? There was the example of the hospital-based violence intervention program out of Highland. I would assume that that covers Berkeley as well, given that Highland is Berkeley's Level 1 Trauma Center, where we would also be getting, you know, any gun violence victims getting, end up at Highland. Similarly, there was the information about how important diversity is in BPD. We've heard in the past that a large percentage of the diversity with respect to race and ethnicity within BPD actually comes from the parking enforcement officers, the non-sworn officers. So I guess I'm just curious, like, is there any, going to be at any point an accompanying report to describe what is going on in Berkeley right now? And what, what if any of these practices are we currently employing?
Yeah, that, and I think I've said it briefly at the beginning, because I was trying to go quick, even though I didn't. That is, that's the next report. That's kind of specifically the next report with an additional piece of recommendation. So it's part of it is, here's what's happening, and here's what we recommend happen different. Is going to be the alternative, it's called the Alternative Responses Report, but it's going to include all of this, ironically, just yesterday I had an exchange with the chief around training, but training exists just as a precursor. We're going to, you know, go deeper into that, but yes, that's going to be in the next.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. And then the second thing is, I also just want to say, I really appreciate that you're saying that this is a working document, because, and I touched on this earlier with respect to the auditor's report. But I feel like this report is really, really lacking in the discussion around traffic. Given its outsized importance in the amount of time that our police are spending doing it, the number of events that our police are responding to. And it was concerning for me to hear that you say, Mr. Mohammed, that Burke Dot is a separate process, and I'm worried that that is the information that's coming from the city to you. If that's true, that's actually very dangerous. Right now, the Public Works Director is working on Burke Dot, but it's really, right now, it's like an organizational change management sort of operation. It's not, it doesn't really address the vast amounts of traffic-related resources that we are putting into the police right now, and thinking about whether that is something that's really important. I just want everybody to like, take a step back. I think a lot of folks on this call are really steeped in knowing and understanding, and are deeply embedded in work around housing and mental health and substance use disorders. But I just want to say, like, people, tradition, we tend to think of, you know, and I just want to say, this was actually pretty upsetting to me, because I brought it up in the last meeting, the use of accident in this report to describe traffic collisions. These actually aren't accidents, right? We know actually what can create safety on our streets, make it safe for people to, you know, get to the bus, to walk around, to drive in their cars, to ride their bikes. We know those things, and we actually know that traditional traffic enforcement is not effective. And that's not discussed anywhere in this report. We also know that despite the narrative, like around creating a warrior mentality, like you talked about, around traffic stops, the data don't bear that out. The traffic stops are fundamentally not dangerous for the police officer. We do know, unfortunately, they are dangerous, often for the people who are being pulled over. And so I find that the report is really lacking in, in a lot of other parts of the report, there were discussions about what are the, we know that this is a problem, that the police are not dealing well with this, and here are the best models for how it can work better. And I don't really, other than the elimination of pretextual stops, which is critical, but that's, that's a small part of, I mean, it's a really important part. But it's a small part of how we overall envision traffic enforcement, and also how we envision making our streets safer. Because just like, just like with mental health services, we're not just focusing on like, how we can essentially replace who's going to calls for mental health crises, but we can actually have some sort of preventive services. Traffic works in the same way. There are preventive approaches that we can take to make our streets safer against traffic violence that actually are effective. And, yeah, I'll go ahead and stop that there. But just to say, on the note of like pretextual stops, I think another area that could be expanded, and the Fair and Policial, Fair and Immartial Task Force, sorry, hard to say, was really great in calling for an end of pretext stops, but didn't really get into like, the details of what exactly that means. Not that that was their task, but it's really critical that that information about like, what offenses do need to be policed, is driven by safety. And there is a part of the city that focuses on traffic safety. And I will just say that, and that's the Transportation Department. And it is very difficult for the Transportation Department Division to get data from BPD about what is causing the collisions. It takes tons of time, data agreements. This data is not flowing freely, and it's one of the reasons that I was part of a group calling for Burke Dot. This needs to be all together. How do we make our streets safe from traffic? We need all the data about the stops, we need the data about the collisions. We need the same people who are responding to the collisions to have an understanding of what's causing those collisions. And those people are engineers, they're not police officers. Police officers are not, don't fundamentally understand why does a collision happen? So just, I really, really urge you to develop this part of the report, given how important this was in the auditor's report. So, and I'm happy to, you know, talk offline about other ideas, but thank you. But again, thank you. I learned so much on the other part.
Yeah, and on this part, it is somewhat deliberate. So you hit on the issue of Burke Dot. So we deliberately didn't go as in-depth, because there's this other initiative. And, you know, it's late right now, this has come up in other task force meetings, but we have, you know, we're trying to work with the City Manager's Office to try to have coordination. But there is an issue in terms of, you know, the disjointed, the potentiality for disjointed efforts that we don't want. So I think that's something we should circle back around on for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So to Commissioner Haide.
Yeah, you know, I'd really like to see a conversation around substance use. I brought it up before, but now I really am at a point of saying, and I follow it every day on Twitter, from the experts at the National Harm Reduction Coalition in New York, to what's being decriminalized in Oregon, to other cities proposing supervised injection sites, to the X the X waiver that Biden just put in place a few days ago, all the way to arresting people for low-level offenses of small possession. And depending on which way it goes with treatment, or with a punitive measure, and the disparities that fall along with that, I was really hoping that somewhere this conversation about the Berkeley Police Department, and how they deal with the percentage of offenses, if they are offenses, with substance use plays itself out, or are people getting treatment? Are we using harm reduction principles? And I'm not seeing that. And there's such a rich, robust conversation going on, not only in this country, but in Portugal and in other places around substance use. And I feel like we need to get on top of this. We've got a terrible meth problem here. And, you know, San Francisco had a meth task force that put out a report in 2019 that was really helpful. I know that's part of their street medicine team. So I'm kind of hoping this conversation is going to be part of this policing reimagining process.
Point very well taken, yep.
Does that mean it's going to get addressed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments, probably in reverse order. I just like, while I agreed with almost everything that Commissioner Lutzker said, I do want to point out that traffic stops can be dangerous to police, that there were two police officers who were killed in March of 2009 in Oakland on a very routine traffic stop, and resulted in two more officers being killed after they tried to catch the guy. But the traffic stop itself was trivial stop, seven o'clock on a Saturday morning, and two officers wound up dead. So it's not completely benign, and I just want to make sure that that's stated. Second thing is, I don't know about everybody else, but this is a really busy time of year for me. I'm reading a gazillion student papers, and I had to make a choice between reading David's report and reading Jenny's report. And unfortunately, I opted for Jenny, so I need more time to, so I hopefully we have another opportunity to discuss this with, with David. The third thing, and this is a little bit of a, well, the third thing regards cahoots. And I, since your footnote on cahoots is a 2017 report that they themselves wrote, I don't know if you've gone back to Eugene and talked to Eugene PD or gone back and talked to cahoots in the recent months, but they've had a conference and a sit-down recently in which they've tried to figure out, okay, what percentage of calls are really being diverted? And they're coming up with something much closer to five and six percent rather than the eighteen to twenty percent. And the reason why it's complicated is the way you call cahoots is through Eugene PD dispatch. And so all calls that go to cahoots become part of the denominator. And cahoots is a fantastic program. I think every city should have a cahoots, but it's not clear to me that it diverts as much, let's say, police business as is reputed, both in the report and in a lot of the national media. So I, I do suggest, there is a report that Eugene PD put out and earlier this year, and it just might be interesting to take a look at. But other than that, I'm looking forward to reading the report, and other than, I won't have any more comments right now.
Commissioner Go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I want to, sorry, support everything that Commissioner Lutzker said about the sort of false separation that we're creating between Burke dot and this. I mean, I, I think what the Public Works Department is doing is very important, but I think that they would benefit from the wisdom of this group. And I actually think it's in the scope of work to include alternatives and approaches that will help us get to a place where any enforcement that we have is not a transfer of the same traditional enforcement like we have now. So I expect to see those alternatives in this report. I don't see it as separate. I think that's part of the scope, so I'll just say that. So even though Burke dot might be happening in Public Works, there are some things that I expect to be happening here. And I can already see the danger of not doing that, because I've heard two comments today that are relying on anecdotal evidence and are a little bit flippant about the effectiveness of certain strategies. Whereas if you actually look at studies and models, you can have a more nuanced approach to the inclusion of those strategies. And I, when, if Burke dot is happening separately and it's brought here, I don't want this group to respond in a way that I'm hearing today, because we have not educated this group on the alternatives to Burke dot. I think automated, for example, speaking, I, I am very much against, the way I started doing this work is a lot to do with surveillance of our communities, but a lot of the conversation around automated speed enforcement has actually, as much as I hate it, has been seen to be effective in reducing traffic violence. I look at that as a transition technology. I also want to say that it also matters who's getting that data. Is it the police department, or is it civil, is it a civilian? A body that's getting the data, and what are the safeguards that might be different? How do we still create accountability? Those are the nuanced conversations that I'm interested in having, rather than saying that, that, yes, it may not work, but it's very specific to the situation and to the subject that it may or may not work. The same thing with, are traffic stops dangerous for, for officers? What the studies we've seen, especially, I'm not going to remember everything now because I wasn't prepared to discuss this, but Jordan Blair Woods, who wrote, I think his, his latest opinion in the, in the New York Times, and a really good paper that he wrote, you know, talks about how it's, the, the numbers show that it's not. So of course, there might be situations that it is dangerous. That can be true of anything, but that's not what I'm going to base the action that we might take as a city on. It's not on the, the one instance. It's, everything that we're looking here is a pattern. For me, everything that we're looking here is a shift in our strategy. So I would like us to be more nuanced, and I would like us to not say that, oh, Burke dot is happening there. I think some parts of Burke dot should be happening here, because we do have a lot of wisdom in this group, and I'd like to educate them on this piece of it, have you educate us on this piece of it, so we can respond in a more nuanced fashion. And I'm trying to do that the same way for mental health. And again, there are a lot of intersections between the way people, the way people experience our streets is not in these silos of mental health and traffic, and when somebody is walking on the street as a black or brown person, they experience all of that together. So we divide it up because it makes it manageable for us and for city government, but that's not how people experience it. And if you're going to be doing a reimagining process, let's think about the experience of the person as a whole person. Not, you know, are they going for a walk? Anyway, I hope you get the point I'm trying to make. I probably will have to make this again, so you'll excuse me for repeating myself, but I hope we see some change going forward. So thank you.
Mr. White, you have something?
I just didn't know, Chair, if you wanted to take, there's one hand raised for a public comment, if you wanted to get that public comment in before it got too, too late.
Yes, let's, let's do that. Thank you.
Okay, let me bring Ty in. Ty, you should be able to speak.
Okay, hi, sorry about that. Question, and I'm sorry if I missed this. I, I lost connection for, for a second, but now, is this, is the goal of this program to reallocate funds or reduce the, the amount of police officers employed and replace them with these, you know, kind of community outreach people? And that, that's my main question. And, and my second question is, you know, how do you, how do you maintain response times when you're adding this complication to this tiered system that you're proposing? And yeah, that's my question.
Thank you.
Sir, is, during public comment is not customary to actually answer any question. To your first one, I'll just state that that is one possibility. I, I think that's why we're here as a task force to, you know, first determine where we are as a city in terms of our public safety programs and systems. Review those thoroughly, then look at, you know, models elsewhere, and then see, you know, how those can mesh and how we can potentially make changes, but you know, that's going to be part of a thorough, ongoing process to fully understand as we're doing tonight. So, you know, could be part of the process, but that, you know, that will be based on data, that will be based on, you know, research we're doing, and really the expertise we have on, on this task force. Okay. Commissioner Malvita.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm, I'm left wondering, what are sort of the next steps that we should be embarking on? What is the charge now that we have this information? I know that we, that there is a subcommittee that covers quite a bit of what we talked about today. I think it's budget, policing alternatives, it's a huge scope of stuff that that subcommittee is working on, and I'm wondering, there, there are some folks who are not a part of any subcommittee that could do with being involved in some, maybe if they had an opportunity, or if they're, if the scope of work was too large for one specific subcommittee. But I guess I'm, I'm just trying to think out loud here. What, what is the charge of that subcommittee, and how will we be engaged in that as people who are not in that subcommittee specifically? And some of us may not be involved in those subcommittees because we're already in another one, or we may not have all that time, but we definitely have expertise to offer in developing, you know, what could be a successful model for Berkeley.
I'll just start structurally and then open up the other commissioners. I know, Mr. White, you partially did this today, but for future meetings, we'll have specific sections on the agenda, at least have reports out, and then potentially discussions on actions taken on the subcommittee level. And hopefully that will help keep the entire task force abreast of what is taking place. And then in terms of the larger question, I, so some of that's still up, you know, for discussion and, and deciding how we want to organize it. Certainly, you know, the policing task force and looking at the budget and looking at, you know, how the department functions in terms of their beats and teams, has been a large part of discussion so far, and this, as you said, is a large discussion. I'm open to suggestions, but yeah, don't have any specifics at the time. I would think you could probably go to that subcommittee, and then just allocate, you know, make sure we allocate our time well, and, you know, start on, you know, which meetings we want to do what, at least that worked for controlled equipment ordinance, but if commissioners have suggestions, so free. Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Malvita, did that answer your question, or do you want to, you know, find the more concrete solution or concrete?
I guess the, the report out was helpful. I guess knowing that in the agenda, the future agendas will have a report out to the rest of the task force.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Diaz.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Mr. Mohammed, I appreciate your report, and I love all the alternatives that you created inside of that report that you gave for us, alternatives to policing and stuff. I just wanted to say, like, I think there would be one part that I would love to see, and I think the alternative would be like also educating low-income community, marginalized communities, underrepresented communities, and maybe trying to create a system where it's like, there's an accountability too, where it's like, you know, if there's a violation created by a police officer, the person is educated on how they can report the incident or a violation of a police officer. And, you know, creating accountability where it's like, you know, after a certain amount of violations, you kind of touched on it a little bit, like with Shabin, he has seventeen incidents before, you know, he killed an individual. So I think there would be, and I, and there's definitely, there's definitely instances of Berkeley police, like Double Luna, who's actually killed individuals and still working, so like, you know, I think there's definitely a potential to kind of look at it and be like, okay, well, who are the police officers and what incidents do they have? And kind of maybe try to, you know, create this, this whole accountability thing, because, you know, there, there are a lot of Berkeley police officers with incidents on their records and stuff like that too, so. I think, and you know, just educating the community, like, you know, if this happens, or, or just educating them on their rights too, is a huge component of it, and maybe we should incorporate that too, also into these, in these things.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you, very good point. We have a little bit of that, but we could definitely expand that piece of the report. Mr. White.
Thank you, Chair. Just a, a couple of things. We do have our interim police chief, Louis, coming to the next meeting of the task force, and definitely want to encourage if any of this discussion around the calls for service piece or the alternative model strikes accord, and any questions that you have for the chief, I would really appreciate if you sent them over to Shamika and ourselves, so we could make sure that she gets ahold of those as she drafts her presentation, and certainly, you know, whatever gaps are there from the next presentation, we can be sure to bring her back so that all your questions can get answered. So I just really want to encourage, please take down all the questions you have for her. She's very open and wants to engage with everyone, so, you know, whatever those are, please just put it all together, and we'd love to get it into our hands so she can be responsive and helpful to this task force. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Go.
Yeah, I had one more thought, and I don't know if it's possible. Nahali, thank you for the report. I'm also really looking forward to digging in. I am wondering if there are any budget numbers associated with any of these programs that you found? And, you know, I, I guess it would be nice to just have, like, how long, if it was a pilot, how long it was for, like, one place to look at, like a chart that said, this was a list, this was the amount of money, this is how long it ran for, here's a link to the outcomes, or, or something like that, a, a simple way.
Sure, we can try to streamline it into some kind of easily digestible graphic to make it, you know, more able to be comparable between various organizations as well. But for example, cahoots, for a year, it costs, I believe, 2.1 million annually, and they have resulted in cost savings of around 8.9 million dollars annually. So that's just one quick example of something that, you know, we did include that budget.
Yeah, that's, I think, exactly the kind of information that's really helpful to us, and also, I think, yeah, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions, commissioners? I see none.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
On the, on, on the previous thing on Commissioner Malvita's question, I'm also wondering, can the agenda always have the subcommittees and the folks who are in the subcommittees included, so we know who's in what? And the second thing was, can we discuss if we want new subcommittees or things like that, maybe for the next agenda items at the beginning of our meeting at some point? Because folks tend, a couple of folks have had to leave, as, you know, if we keep it to the end, so kind of switch it out every once in a while, so some of the housekeeping stuff can happen in the beginning, rather than wait to. That's just my suggestion.
No, totally hear that. And yes, that can be done, and I'm sure we can add the names, some smaller texts on the agenda, so we all remember, you know, who's who and where we are. Okay. All righty, well, thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Thank you, Nahali. Well, big thank you, Nahali. The bulk of the work makes you credits, or credits due. I know I enjoyed being able to have looked through it and a good idea of some of those models. Traffic is big for me too, though, so definitely would like to see more. You know, I, I think on the, the city end, and I think Commissioner Lutzker probably said better than me, you know, there's, is structural things happening, certainly, though, you know, the larger question of, you know, how would an regular unarmed traffic enforcement agency look like that can effectively, you know, mitigate the negative outcomes and foster safety in the city is a big question, and Is a big question, and to me, that's outside of the scope of what they're currently doing. That's kind of for us to answer. So more on that would definitely be great, but thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, well, we have reached the end of our agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second there.
Oh, roll.
Commissioner Polk, absent. Mr. Ho. Absent. Christian Fine?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ajigoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
Ooh, where did you go today?
Absent. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chima?
Yes.
Commissioner Dangerfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutzker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Opton?
Yes.
Chairman Mizel?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindheim?
Yes.
Commissioner Malvita?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, really appreciate discussing the insights and looking forward to some more work. And we'll get the agenda nailed down, I promise you that for the next one. Yeah, thank you. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.